The meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it.
May we have a roll call, Mr. Gorsky?
Certainly. Mrs. Arminio. Mr. Braverman.
Present.
Thank you. Mr. Chiarella.
Here.
Mrs. De Mayo.
Here.
Mrs. Lang.
Here.
Mrs. Carino. Mr. Ryback. Mr. Russo.
Here.
Mr. Rutzke.
Here.
Mrs. Kolopanowicz.
Here.
Madam Board President, you have a quorum present this evening.
Thank you.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted January 20th, 2017 at all schools, the Home News Tribune, the Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will go to the approval of the minutes for the Public Board of Education meeting of October 19th, 2016.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. De Mayo and Mrs. Lang, all in favor?
Aye.
I recuse.
We recuse opposed?
I don't know.
Recused. Mrs. Lang is recusing.
We need a second then?
Mrs. Lang is the second, Mr. De Mayo is the first.
But can you second and then recuse?
Oh, then we need another second from somebody who was here.
I will second.
Mr. Rutzke. Okay, the approval of the minutes for the closed session meeting of October 19th, 2016.
So moved.
Is there a second? Second by Ms. Carino. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions or recusals? And Mr. Chiarella too? Think you recuse on the first one too?
So noted.
The approval of the minutes for Public Board of Education meeting of November 16th, 2016.
So moved.
I'll second.
Mr. De Mayo, Mr. Rutzke. Are any additions or correction to those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions or recusals? Mr. Chiarella, Mrs. Lang. And the closed session meeting of November 16th, 2016.
I'll move.
Mr. Rutzke.
Second.
Mr. De Mayo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions or recusals? Mr. Chiarella and Mrs. Lang. Now, at this time, we are going to have some board training on our data management system, which I believe is one of our board goals for this year. I think it's goal number two?
I believe so.
Okay, so we will commence with some training.
So if I could just introduce... So, as Ms. Kolopanowicz said, this is a board goal that was decided last summer and the board voted to purchase Board Docs, the software, I think it was November, maybe October, November. And the presentation is, or the training, I should say, is tonight. So Sylvia is from Board Docs and she's going to take us through this training. She has been in the district office the past couple days. Some of you were at the training last night. And, you know, she's going to go through some of the training tonight. Hopefully, you'll find it enjoyable and easy to use. There are some good features with this Board Docs. One being that I particularly liked, and Sylvia will probably talk about it, is a search feature that really, you can search all the board agendas that use this system throughout New Jersey. And you can also do a national search as well. So if we're looking for particular wording for resolutions or something else, that's pretty interesting. A number of school districts in New Jersey use Board Docs and this is the company that New Jersey School Boards recommends. So with that, Sylvia, are you ready to go?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, I'm not used to being tethered to a mic, but I want to make sure that everyone is at the Board Docs site. So you go to, you need to open up a browser, go to an internet browser, and we're going to navigate to BoardDocs.com. So I'll walk around and make sure you can get there.
For Safari or Google, does it matter?
Doesn't matter.
Google Docs?
Board Docs.
Board Docs.
Mine is asking for password.
It's gotta get me there.
I can't even get to the...
Okay.
Is it BoardDocs.com?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, Jason's coming around now and he'll help you with the Wi-Fi.
I found it. I'm brown-noser.
Now save it as a favorite.
Am I where I belong?
It looks like you have...
You pass.
Looks like he's got access, so let's go over here. So we're gonna log in, you're gonna log in.
If you wanted to, if not, we have no... It's all right.
Again?
I'm gonna minimize this.
Oh, good Patty. Patty.
It's right here.
Oh, I did, it was already on. Yeah. That's why I was able, it made it easy for me.
Good girl, Patty.
And then it opens. So then you log in right over here. Go here and log in. And you're gonna do this each time.
Okay.
First initial and your last name.
Jade De Mayo?
Yes.
Upper or lowercase?
All lowercase, everything is lowercase.
If she wishes to speak, she can.
Yes, everybody's using the same temporary password and right down here.
Are you letting me move ahead?
Right down here. And then your password, temporary, change me, all lowercase, one word.
Change me?
Yep, change me.
And the username?
Do we have, I know we're doing a presentation for the band, do we have a...
Your username is your first initial, last name.
Suppose they have a clip of the band that you want to show and the certificates are, I have not here.
Yes. Go to this first one, it says my Board Docs instance.
From here, the band director as well, Zach Morado, and they're gonna hand out the, you know, we're gonna call the kids up in.
Exciting.
He's fine. See, there's your name in the upper right-hand corner. You always want to see your name in the upper right-hand corner. That way we know it's you.
Oh, you're gonna say it too?
Why is there a disconnect between you and...
Login, first initial, last name.
I wouldn't sit next to my brother. We're on camera. Have to be careful.
Yep. I have the wedding pictures on here.
Nice.
You could see all the wedding pictures. I don't think you've seen any.
No, I haven't.
How come that was?
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's right, yes, okay. So everybody's got theirs. And, but you're just going, you're gonna take notes, you're not gonna follow along.
Correct, correct.
Wait, that's not fair. We have to learn, he has to learn.
Are you evolving?
I'm not in this class.
Okay, I don't see him.
Okay.
He's a figment of my imagination.
As long as, as long as you know how to get in there, that's all.
All right.
I know you'd be calling me up, how do you, what's the... Pay attention.
There will be a test.
That's right.
What is this big blue screen I've got?
Oh, you gotta go up to the top one.
You have to put your username and...
That's it. Click.
And in your username, you...
I'm glad I'm sitting next to you.
Yeah.
This mine's Kate Kolopanowicz.
No, 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 they're not.
She was her second-year preschool.
That's my daughter.
Adorable, that age.
Yeah, no, she's... She did let me down.
I was on fire.
This will get you an antibiotic, she took an antibiotic, took that.
What does it say? I can't see it.
Go to Board Docs.
Oh, the top one.
She's quick, you know, so she's...
Not a driving test, but they have a van that the... I've seen the van, it's not a huge van, but it's...
She's a little bit of a... That would be considered a white lie, so it wouldn't hurt your feelings.
Okay, so everyone is logged in and everyone is at this page. And you see your name in the upper right-hand corner. All right, so your password, your temporary password says change me. And so we're gonna follow those instructions, change me. And here's how you'll do it. You go to the dropdown by your name. Click on that dropdown and you will see change password. Click on change password and then the password rules will come up. So you can, if you know a password that you want to change it to, you can do it tonight. Otherwise, if you want to think about it, don't do it, you can, you can wait and do it later. Okay?
Password.
You can change it to whatever you want, as long as it meets these rules. Okay. So if you don't want to change it, just go ahead and hit cancel and then we'll move from there. And then you can just look at my screen, so you don't have to do yours. But a couple of other things that I just want to point out that's in the dropdown by your name. One is the Board Docs help. Because I already know you're gonna call Nancy and Kathy, I know that, that's fine. But they won't always be available. So if they're not, then you want Board Docs help. And this is our online help for you. There's two ways to contact tech support. It's here or, you see this number? Well, okay, I'll tell you what the number is, 'cause I know it's hard for you to see. It's 800-407-0141, option 1. 800-407-0141, option 1. Our help is run by Board Docs employees, it's not a call center, and it's 24/7. So it is available to you 24/7. You can call as many times as you want, ask the same question over and over and over again. That's, they don't care, that's fine, that's why they're there. So, so that's one way. So in this, this help, you can search for whatever it is that you're looking for. If you're trying to figure out, how do I open an attachment? You can search for attachment, you can search for agenda. The nice thing about the help is, the results that you get are based on your user role. So you'll never get results for something you cannot do. So if you see it, you can do it. And now, if you can't figure out what it's telling you to do, that's when you can call tech support. If you want to just send them a message instead of calling them, maybe your cellphone has died or something, I don't know, you can't make a call at the moment. But I'll show you this little box. To the right of this icon, you see this, the right of the print icon, it says contact support. You click on that, it opens up this box. It looks like instant chat or instant messaging, but it's not. It will send an email to tech support. And you can put your message in here, help, I don't understand, I was trying to do blah, 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 this is blah, blah, blur. And if you want them to call you, you can just say, call me, put your phone number in, and then they will call you back. The promise is someone will get back to you within four hours, it doesn't usually take that long. The nice thing is when you send this message, it sends a link to the page that you were on. So that gives them a heads-up of where you were and what you were trying to do. Okay? So you can either send tech support an email, or you can call them on the 800 number. So that's one way to do it. And they really are available on holidays and nights and weekends, because most of you have day jobs, and so we do get a lot of calls at nights and weekends. The other thing that is really very important for you to do, the dropdown by your name, you see where it says log out? It is very important that you go here to log out. Don't go up to the red X and close that out. That's the equivalent of closing your front door and that's it. Log out is the equivalent of closing your front door and locking it. If you do not log out and if someone comes along and picks up your device, they can just go to your history and then they'll see whatever board information, confidential information you were looking at. So you want to make sure you log out. So on the agenda, the last item says adjourn and log out to remind you to do that. Okie dokie. All right, so that's it with, with that. Just want to point out home, you don't have to click on home or anything, but sometimes during your board meetings, you might discuss something that's on your district site. And when you do, home will actually take you to your district site. Now, the way that you can do that, well, actually, I think we had already said that you'll have tech support to set up the site so that you don't have to keep clicking. So you'll have your site and the Board Docs site side by side, as I have it up there. But if you right-click on it, then you can open the link in a new tab. All righty, going forward, when the agenda is ready, you will get an email and there will be a link on that email. You will click the link and it will bring you to Board Docs, but it's going to say, enter public site, authenticate. The page is going to be white and blank. It will say, enter public site, authenticate. You always, always, always authenticate to log in. If you do not authenticate, then you're in the public site and then you don't have access to your board material. So authenticate, log in.
I have a question. I have a Mac that I use and there's no right-clicking in Mac.
With the, with that one, oh, no, no. Yeah. No, you know what?
Will you buy it for me?
Is it a desktop or laptop?
It's a laptop, okay.
Yeah, because you use a two-finger.
Is that a two-finger on that?
And then you can use a two-finger and it will, it'll give you a right-click.
Okay, thanks. I'm a slow learner.
No, that's, that's okay.
While you're at it.
Okay, so when you click on that link and then you click on authenticate, that brings you to this page, this is your Board Docs page. Now it will, I'm on featured, I'm sorry, it's going to bring you to this meetings page. So it might look like that. Does not matter, as long as you see Board Docs and you see these different tabs, you'll be able to access your, your meeting. You see featured meetings, policies, library, and search. Those are all of the tabs that you will need. Everything that you need is on this page. You do not ever have to use this back browser arrow for anything, everything will be here. So the star in featured tells you, this is the newest document. So you can have the new meeting, the new agenda, that's the newest agenda, or the newest policy that you're going to look at, or the newest superintendent's update. The newest whatever will always have a star and it will be featured. And then when that one is no longer new, after you've already discussed that, then Kathy and Nancy will remove that and then they'll put the next newest one. So every time you see a star is for a new meeting, okay? So, and we'll take a look at your agenda. I just want to show you very quickly, you see policies here? Policies, eventually, that's gonna be down the road, 'cause you said you want to do that.
Yeah, we're gonna leave policies separate right now, 'cause we're through Strauss ESME. Parents know how to get to the policies on the website and so we're just, down the road, we can look at merging it in.
Yep. The nice thing about having it in there is that you just go to one place to do, to search everything related to the board. But what's nice, you've got active policies that everyone can see under consideration, those that you're working on, and policies that are retired. So then you'll know what were those policies that were retired and what replaced it. So you'll have access to that.
Real quick though, once they're retired, when you, if you hit on retired and you see a policy that's retired, does it automatically tell you what replaced it? Or do you have to go back to act?
No, it will, they can fill it in like that. So when Kathy or Nancy or whoever is doing the policies and they're doing that, they can then put in, if they know, which policy replaced it. And maybe it wasn't replaced by anything, maybe it was just like, it's just retired, right. Yep. But if it's in there, you'll, you'll be able to see it. And that's just something that you all will be able to see, the public will not see it because you're not operating under retired policies.
Right.
I have a question. If there were policies in there and all the policies were listed, and I did a search, would it search each document?
Yes.
Right now, if you wanted to search something, I think you have to go into each policy to look for it.
No, I'm gonna show you that search.
You gotta search, it should go into all the policies. If you just put a keyword in the search, it'll pull up five, six, 10, however many policies have that word in it.
Okay, all right, all right, thanks.
And Jill, if, later on, if you want, I'll go through the Strauss ESME with, just to make sure that, you know.
That's, all right, okay.
All righty, so that's coming, in the future. Library, you do have a library. And what's nice about that, you can put different reference materials in there. So we've got a couple of things in there. Under general, so your committee notes, and do we actually put anything in your committee notes? Okay, so we just did the training yesterday and today, so there's not, everything is not filled out, but we just at least want to show you what it's going to, to look like. But over here in the library is where you will find all of your committee notes. So you click on the dropdown on library, you'll see general, which is where that one is listed. And then you click on, well, you click on it, well, we don't have anything in there. And what, and this is private, so it's just available to you all. And this is the actual layout of your agenda. You see public content, administrative content, and executive content. So any information that's placed here, only you can see it. The reading rights are, you can read at your level, which is the executive level, and up, but not down. So Nancy put a note in here to herself to attach or type in this box, any information for you. If there's any information she wants to share with the public, she'll put it up there. Okay? So that's how you will see all of that. And we have one other thing that we put in the, in the library for you. So you can have events. So if there's something that you need to attend at a school or something, or in the community, that will be in there. But strategic goals. So now, we just made up this number, because I wanted to show her a graphic, so don't look for that number to be accurately reflecting anything, we just, we just made it up. So you have a goal, number two, establish a plan and implement that. And so each time you have a goal, you can attach it to an agenda item. So each time you discuss that item, you'll be able to see in the library how many times you discussed that goal with whatever item you were discussing. So now, let's look, if I scroll over here, scroll down, you'll be able to see, goal progress. So it was for this date, January 25th, that meeting, the board training on data management, the type of information. So you'll be able to see all of that going forward.
And that record stays there?
Yes.
And then the next time, like in February, if we do it again, it will just...
That's right.
So if we wanted to refer back to the initial training day, that would be there.
It will be there. Yep. I will show you, when we get to the agenda, how you can see that in the agenda and how it will bring you over here.
I don't know if you're done with this, but in libraries with events, would Falcon...
Seventy-five percent stopped.
She just, that's just...
Oh, like Falcon Flyer? Yeah, I mean, we could put anything in there, really.
You could. Well, that's what I'm saying, would that would, well, that's not really an event, right?
Right.
So what would that, what would, would that be something in the library? In this system, where would you put the Falcon Flyer?
We really haven't, we've been storing it, we actually don't even store it. Stored out in Constant Contact's cloud, if you will, their servers, and we just have links from our website to take you to there. So we would just be able to put the link in, in there for you to go.
In here?
Yeah, if you wanted to.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, if we're supposed, if everything's gonna be concentrated in here, that would probably be...
Okay.
Because right now, we get it, we get a copy on our district email.
Right, you have an email to you, yeah.
But this is...
If you wanted to go, it's like, if you go on our website, all the past copies are there as well. But we can do a link to that.
So this isn't replacing the email, this is in addition to the email.
Yes.
Oh, okay, then never mind.
Okay, all right.
You'll still get it either way.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, the other thing is board members. So there's a place there for each of you. So there's Kathy, the president. And so right now, it's not filled in, but this is what typically goes in here. It will be your picture, your bio, and when your term expires. And your bio is just your connection to the community. So how long have you lived in the community? Have you attended school here? Did your children go here? Something like that. And then what is your profession? And when your term expires? And that's pretty much it, going with the picture. So that's what we have in the library.
And that'll be accessible to the public.
Yes, that is accessible to the public. Yep. So that's it. All right, so now let me show you the, the search, on the search tab. Now you can search for, in, from any place in Board Docs, but the search tab is what I want to show you right now. Now notice, when I click on the tag, the tab, all of these boxes are checked. This answers the questions that you would ask Kathy and Nancy. When did we, fill in the blank, when did we approve, when did we buy, when did we whatever? And then you will search for it here. Now, we don't have anything to search just yet, because, you know, we don't really have anything in here. It has to be active and synced overnight and we, and we don't. But I am going to show you another search. This is also available to your public. All of the documents will be placed in PDF so that your public can access it, okay? So everything will be in PDF. Now, meta over here, and when I click on meta, you notice the other boxes go unchecked. Because now you're not searching your documents anymore, you're searching the public content area of other Board Docs subscribers. So you could be working on something and you might say, hmm, I wonder what other districts are doing about blah, blah, blah. So you can search for that. So we're gonna search for referendum.
New Jersey.
New Jersey.
Ready to see what pulls up there? You can type it in yourself if you want to.
Referendum.
Uh, what's that?
Okay, so first I'm just going to do referendum and then I'll do New Jersey referendum. So anybody who's on Board Docs, who subscribes to Board Docs and they have information in their public content area, that is what we'll pull. And so you can take a look and see what Rochester Public Schools in Minnesota did. So this is what they made available to their public. So there's background information, there's a lot of legislation stuff and recommendation and their, their resolution. Some people use this to, to get an idea of maybe how to wordsmith what they're working on, or, or just say, oh, that's a good idea, we didn't think of that. So it's just whatever. There are policies, people definitely use it for, for policies to see what, how is their policies different than ours? But now, if you are just interested in New Jersey, you don't care about Minnesota, Illinois, Kansas, or anyplace else, then behind referendum, you just put a comma and then NJ. And then it will just bring up New Jersey. If it brings up any other documents, that's because it has New Jersey in their documents. So there's Shumong. Some, they had a presentation on referendum, somebody made a report. There's Haddon. Collins Wood.
There doesn't seem to be any substance to it.
It just depends. It depends, because some of them really are, it's a lot. The other thing too, if I'll keep...
Does this do Boolean searching?
Yes, it, it will. So if you, and then, not only that, and if you don't know how to spell something... So, if you, and, and then, not only that, and if you don't know how to spell something, then it will do the wildcard search. So, you put in a couple of letters, and then you do the star, um, that's shift eight. And then, it will bring up all the words that starts with that, with that letter.
What I did, what I did.
I take care of it.
Yep.
Is that some kinda search trick that I never heard of?
Is that right, you haven't, okay.
You just put in a couple of letters and a star and-
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
And there's a couple of other things that you-
Yep. Well, the, the Boolean is, um, the, the search is different things, and so, you can do and, and plus. So, instead of like, like I put the comma there, so that, uh, what gets a little tricky sometimes is-
One at a time, Frank, one at a time.
If you're looking for a phrase, put it in quotations, and search for that. Otherwise, it searches for each instance of that word, so put it in quotation. Yes, quotations, I'm just thinking, did I say referendum, yes.
All the data that's in there are from schools?
They're not necessarily from schools, so we ha, the majority is schools. But we also have municipalities, so there will be city governments, county governments as, as well, and other government and agencies. Yeah, if it's in their public area, then you will. We also have some private entities, and if, if it's private, it will not show up. So, like, your information, once you start, uh, putting your agenda items in here, anything that's in your public content area is now a part of this. But anything that's in that executive area, or that administrative area, that will not be a part of this. So, which brings me, what happens sometimes, um, if you all are working on something that's pretty sensitive, and as school districts, you all work on the same kinds of issues at some point or, or another, what, you know, occasionally, we'll get requests from, from districts, and you do a search, and you see that this other district, and you don't know them, is working on something that's sensitive that you are, then, they will call us and ask, can you contact that other district? And ask them, can we talk to them about what they were doing with it? So, and we do, we have no control over what they say, but they do. Cause you pretty much all work on the same kinds of things.
Without searching, you know, if I can just look, bring up a map, see a map of New Jersey, a map.
Oh, no, that's, yeah, mm-mm.
Can he just, just to tell you who's done something?
Or, or, yeah, he wants to know who in New Jersey has that. I can find that out for you, but we don't have a way in here of pulling that up, yeah.
Can you do Middlesex County?
Okay.
No, referendum, comma, Middlesex.
Oh, I, okay.
Can, can you do that for them?
Some, sometimes it gets a little, little, oh, oh, I see X, sometimes it gets a little persnickety, but we'll see. Um, no, it didn't.
It's still come.
Yeah, let me clear it out. Okay. Referendum. Now, sometimes it just, it just get, why does that? Oh, is it Middlesex County or Middlesex?
I want the county to see.
Oh, okay.
I just did it for Middlesex County, and really, nothing else came up, but yeah, I don't know who else said it.
And didn't, didn't they have referendum, like, or-
Yeah, it's over, yeah.
Oh, but they might not have the system.
Right, exactly, exactly, yeah.
So, cause this has wood very-
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So, how many districts in New Jersey do use this system?
That I don't know, because we just par, uh, partnered with New Jersey School Board Association. I don't know off the top of my head. What I can tell you, though, is that this, just recently, in recent months, whenever you had that partnership with them, that's when I started coming to this area of New Jersey, cause I always went south, South Jersey. I would always fly into Philadelphia, and then, drive over to someplace. And so, um, we're just starting to get more in, in other parts of New Jersey. Other than that, it was strictly south, so.
How, how long does the material stay on the site?
Until they take it off.
Until we-
Yep.
That, okay.
And our retention rate is ninety-eight point five percent, and so, they leave it.
Because it's public record-
Yep.
That, that stuff anyways, so that'll just probably stay.
Mm-hmm, yep, alright. So, you only see meta if you are logged in. If you are not logged in, if you do not see your name in the upper right-hand corner, you will not see meta. Alright, so meta is, is a wonderful thing, I have no idea what's in there. Um, even if you spell it wrong, if it's the commonly misspelled word, sometimes that comes up, because people spell things wrong. So, spell it wrong, then spell it right, see if you can bring it up. Alrighty, any other questions about that? Alright, so I'm gonna go back over here to this featured tab, and we're gonna take a look at the meeting, your agenda. So, when you click on either featured, or you go to the meetings tab, and you click on that agenda from either place, that's fine. You have view the agenda and print the agenda. So, we'll take a look at view the agenda, and this is the actual layout of your agenda, this is what it looks like.
Where'd you go?
Where'd you go?
Featured. Mm-hmm, you can go to featured, you can go to meetings, and that agenda's going to be in both places.
If you, if you look at your page, if you think your page is being two columns, that left column, where featured, it says January twenty-six, twenty-seven, uh, twenty-seventeen, you gotta click on it, and it'll highlight, it'll come up like a yellowish color. And then, that'll put you into the right column.
Yep. And then, you just click on, view the agenda. Yep, yep, view the agenda. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we have Kathy.
Bam.
Probably gonna happen to other people.
Okay, so, does everybody have this, the open agenda? So, let me just go through this a little bit. Now, we, we tried to keep it as close to what you're norma, you normally see as possible, but we did have to make some slight modifications.
So, can I just ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, when you went to the agenda, did you go to print agenda?
No, I'm gonna show them that.
Yeah, okay.
I am gonna show them that. Uh, because I wanna point out the, um, file, the attachment icons, and then, I'm gonna show them that.
No problem.
Yep. So, as you go down, you can either click, now, these black headers with nothing underneath them, that's just a way of organizing the agenda. They're not clickable, they won't do anything, you can just click all day, and they won't do anything. So, the numbers are not clickable, it is the letters that, that are, so that's where the content is. So, you click on any letter, you read on the right. If you notice in five A, it says approval of minutes. Right next to that, you'll see this icon, like two pieces of paper, that tells you that has files attached. So, that's where all your supporting documents will be, that's how you will find it, instead of it being on paper. So, when you click on that, so you click on that, and then you have to go to the right and scroll all the way down, because it's in that executive content area. So, until you approve the minutes, it's not made available to the public. After you approve the minutes, then they will move it up and make it available to the public. Now, in order to see it, you just click on it, and it will open, and it opens up in a new window. And so, you've got twenty-one pages there. Imagine all of that paper that you are now not printing, so you've got twenty-one right there. When you close it, pay attention to the tab, the one that's the lightest is the one that you need to close. Just that one, don't go all the way over to the right, just that one, and then that will close that, okay? Now, and ease, what, some people find an easy way of, of, uh, going through the agenda, this icon right here, the print icon, if you click on that, now, you've got three ways to, to print. You can print one item, you can print a simple agenda, which is just a listing of all the things that you're gonna talk about, or, you can print, you can do the detailed agenda. And so, actually, during the meeting, you could just go to that view without having to print anything. No, I will show you where you can take notes. So, the, the question was asked, can you take notes on this? You can't n, take notes on that part, but, you can take notes. That is the one thing, feature that you have, that Nancy does not have. So, I can't project it, but I can point out to you, point it out to, um, where it is. So, right over here, in this upper corner, you'll see an itty-bitty little gray box. So, close your, close your print, close your, um, close your, uh, print view. Yep, and you see the small gray box, yep, yep. Little more, little more, there it is. And you can take notes. And when you click on that box, it opens up another box, and you can take notes in there. That is just for you, you can't share it with anybody, you can't send it to anybody, it is just for you. Now, when there are no notes in there, that box is gray. When you put notes in there, it turns yellow. So, just type a couple of things in, in there, and then you see, underneath, you see a green check, a red X, and a trash can. The green check saves it, the red X says, ah, I don't, I don't need to take that note, I changed my mind. And the trash can is where you put it when you're done with that, that note. Yes.
Okay, but it's saying, will, will the page that I wanna do those on be exposed to see?
No, no, so, oh, yeah, yeah. So, it's for each agenda item, so whichever item you're on, like, right now, I'm on five A. If, on five A, I go, and I click on that little gray box, then that note is going to be attached to five A. Then, if I move up to four A, then that will be a different note attached to that box.
Five A has many documents, and will I be able to be on the document page that I wanted to be noted on?
No, that's a different thing, it will just be on the agenda item. It will not be on the document page itself, so like when you-
But will I be able to look, will I be able to have the document, let's say, page three of the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Will I be able to see that agenda and take note that, with that agenda, uh, page open?
Hmm, probably not, so let's just see, so let's click on that. Cause I'm thinking about what type of computer you have, if you, well, you would have to split your screen. You would have to split your screen, uh, and then you can have your, your document on one side, and you can have that on the other side. But that's a split screen, and if you want, for those of you who want to do that, Jason can show you how to, to do that. But you will not be, that does not mean, you will not be writing on that document, right? Will not be writing on that document, but you'll be able to see the document and have your note at the same time.
But you can also just put the one, the things that you're writing on, and that, and turn it printing out full.
That's right, so she said, you can just print whatever you, you want, you can just print that one note, yes, you can.
But if, if a board member is going through, let's say, over the weekend, or, you know, and they wanna take notes, they're looking through the agenda, and they see personnel item number twelve, there's a question about it, or there's something, you know, they can put a note there-
That's right.
And then, anytime they go to that agenda, and number twelve, that note will be there.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
Alright, so, yeah.
Is, I'm guessing that that's operable also, though, so if we're putting notes in?
Notes, um, I'd have to check with Mary, I think they're your own personal notes. I don't think they are operable, because it's just like a memory aid.
I, I don't know, I was just thinking, if, you know, if the, if I'm a member of the public, and I see a board member typing-
Yep.
During a meeting or whatever.
Usually, usually, you will do that at home, so like, when you first get the agenda, because those notes really are for you, you're going through the agenda, and then you wanna write yourself a note, remind me to ask about blah, 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 blah. Now, the other thing that you can do, because that concern does come up. So, the other thing that you can do is, when you write those notes, you can go ahead and print those out for you, and then go and delete them. Bring the, the printed out notes for you, so you can remind yourself of it, and then delete them out of here, so they won't be in there.
But I mean, Karen, I think it would be the same thing, if you had a hard copy, and during something, you were like, oh, that's an interesting, and you wrote it down. You know, you wanted to remember, sue me, something about that item. I don't know whether it's operable or not, it's just a memory aid you're using to, to write a note on.
It, it could, it could be, I mean, everyone should probably think that it, just about everything is operable.
Yes, good point. Yeah, oh, that's probably always the good assumption, that somebody could operate, but.
So, we shouldn't say, oh, the guy in the, in the audience is wearing a funny hat.
Yeah, right, no.
Well, you shouldn't be doing that anyway.
Oh, well, I'm just, I would not do that, but I'm just saying, you know.
Yeah.
But that's actually a good point, the point is, always consider that what we do is for the public. So, we should be cognizant of the fact that, even if we made a note, it should be well-located.
If you're texting on your phone during a meeting, that's operable.
We shouldn't be, we shouldn't be doing it.
Exactly, but that is operable.
That's correct.
Right, right.
Why you get your private server?
Well, don't, shh, very well timed, touche. Alright, so, we're, so just for time's sake, what the-
Yeah, so, um, that's pretty much it, that's all that I wanted to-
Can we go through the, like, an actual agenda, like, hit the print agenda, and so, they can see what it would look like if? In other words, there's two ways to look at that agenda. You can look at it with the two columns, the left, where you gotta click, approval of minutes, presentation, and it brings it up, or you can simply have the agenda up and scroll through it.
Right, and so, what we did, we did look at the print, but we, we clicked on print inside the agenda. So, what he's talking about doing, I'm gonna go down here and close, close. Now, I'm gonna go over to feature, and when I click on that agenda, and so, instead of viewing the agenda, just go straight to print the agenda. Straight to print the agenda.
Everybody got that, where the boxes show up?
Opens it up as a full page instead.
Okay, and so, so we did it inside the agenda, but you don't have to. Now, when you, but also, when you scroll down, any attachment, you can still open the attachments. So, that might be easier to, to scroll through, some people find it easy to, to do it that way. So, it's whatever you're, you're comfortable with.
Might be just an easier way, I mean, it's more, even with the Google Docs, if you're used to it, it just was the agenda, and you can just scroll down, or however.
So, this gives you a good overview of everything on there without clicking, clicking, clicking.
Share a note.
You can, um, most people don't, so, that, that share, not, not share a note. What you are sharing actually is the public agenda, so let me show you. So, you, you saw share here. Share is on every single agenda item, and it's on every agenda. So, this is for your transparency, it's just your public agenda. So, when you click on that, there's an email with that link. So, I told you, you'll get an, an email with a link, and it, that's what it'll be. But it will co, go to the public agenda. So, even though you are board members, you're still gonna come to, enter public site, authenticate. Unless you have login credentials, you can authenticate, you have to go to public, and you'll get the public agenda. No matter, hmm, no notes, that's right, no, no notes. It will just be the public agenda, that's it. Let me, let me show you what the public agenda looks like. So, I'm just gonna go here to the public view, that's gonna log, uh, Nancy out. Alright, so, here it is, the layout is the same, view the agenda. And so, let's see, number five, remember number five? If you look at yours, it's got that icon with, um, with minutes, this one does not. And so, see, that's all that they- And so see, that's all that they see. They don't see anything else. So after you approve those minutes, and then you can move it into the public, then it will appear right there. So right now, it does not, this is all that they see.
So that, oh, okay. So that might be why when we, when we do a search for the other districts, it's not all coming up?
That's right.
Because they may have not approved it yet, and then the...
That's right, that's right. So the only thing that you're seeing is what they put in the public area for you to see. The other thing that I did want to mention, because as you do search, and you will do searches, you're going to run across PDFs, because sometimes people will put a PDF in their public that you can see. However, when you are logged in, and you try to go to and open a PDF from another district, it will say, "You are not authorized to look at it." So here's what you do. You copy that URL, because it'll, it'll redirect you to another page. Copy that URL, put it in a different browser, or if you know how to go to a private window, put it in the private, paste it in the, the another browser, and it will open there. Yep.
That's other districts, if you're just looking...
That's right, so, because if they made any of their PDFs available to the public, you can also see them, but when you're logged in, it's, it's, it's saying that you're, you're not authenticated for that other district, you're only authenticated for here. So just copy that URL, put it in another, paste it in another browser, and then it'll open.
Is it, we were logged in as a public?
The public does not have, um, well, you wouldn't be logged in as public.
Well, the public, let's say somebody from the public was logged in, right?
It, uh, the public can only see one district at a time, period.
I think to your, to your question, though, I think what she's saying is, so if you're pasting that into another browser, that's what the public in that district would see.
Yes, that's right.
So we're accessing it as a public.
Yes. Yep.
Anything else with this agenda?
No, that's, that's really it. So all the work is on Nancy and Kathy. You just get to sit back and read it, and write your notes.
So this is a, kind of a big change in a way. And since the board made it a goal, I would ask if, sorry, with Kathy? Okay. That, um, play around with it, try it, and what we can do is, depending on your comfort level, we can kind of slowly introduce this. So for instance, at the February meeting, we can have laptops for everyone. We can have it logged in, have the, you know, well, you, you could log in on your own password, and you could go through it, or if you want to bring your own device. And, and if you're comfortable with your own device, it might be, make more sense to do that. And then if you want to have a hard copy, and you want to still go through it, but have it here, that's fine. You know, but I think it's just, I think it's new, and, and we need to give it, give it a chance to, you know, see how you like it.
Play up, sort of, public can follow it.
Well, I, I'm sorry to hear...
Can we have the, uh, can we have it up on display for the public to follow it?
Well, actually, I've done that in another district. Uh, the way we did it in another district, and we could do it here, except I think, I think there's more of you that are more comfortable, more tech savvy than, than it was before, not in this other district. They just had a monitor. So just like if you, you can see the monitors, no keyboard, just a monitor. And we put a monitor between every other board member. They didn't touch anything. And then one person, in that case, it was the business administrator, would go through the agenda. I didn't say it would be Mike, I just said, "In that case, it was business administrator." But we could have somebody actually go through, and, and we could display it on a screen for the public the same way. And this way, the public sees, is, we could print out a few paper copies, but it would save on paper copies. They would see it, we would see it, and we would be able to go through, uh, and do it that way. The disadvantage is, some of you like to scroll a little ahead, scroll back, you're comfortable on your device. You wouldn't be able to do that. You would just simply have a screen, and someone would walk you, like, as we went through the agenda, you would just see it go advance on the screen. So it's your preference. It seems like there's a number of you that are comfortable enough that, you know, if it's a section, whatever, you want to scroll through and check, you can go do that. But we can certainly make it either way.
And, yeah, and then what some people do is project that public, uh, but the, the public view, not somebody's login, the public view up there, and then you can just do that, uh, that, from the print view.
And we could do both. We could have the public view, and then you could have your own devices.
Yep.
Well, the, the danger with your own device, in terms of the Open Public Meetings Act, is that technically, we're supposed to deliberate in public. And if there's some, either contentious issue, or an issue that people are discussing, and they're typing to each other...
They can't.
They cannot...
Yeah, no.
And they can't type to each other.
Yeah, but you could on your own device, that's what she's saying.
No, no, when Frank said, "Can we share?", we can't share notes.
Right, yeah, but that's not the point with that.
You could get, I could have that screen open and another screen...
If you have your own device, like, they're texting her and saying...
People could, people could have their phones out and texting one another, too, but...
No, we don't allow that.
Well, I, I know that, but, but I'm saying...
But if you, it's easier if you have, if everybody has their private, uh, computer on. I mean, if I, look, I've seen, in the past, I've seen board members texting, and I've emailed them, and said, "I see you texting," or they, they, they text under here, which is inappropriate. And there isn't anybody on this plane now that's doing, that's done that, that's passed some of it. And so it's, would be easy to do that on your own device.
Yeah, I mean, it could be the same thing, Michelle, if I'm sitting here and I write a note, and I pass it, as a board member, let's say. So, and people have been bringing their own devices to, to the meetings for over a year, I mean, so...
Maybe we need to take small steps with the board before we take steps with the public.
Sure.
Yeah, I agree with that.
You say committee reports are going to be on here eventually? And that would be under what, under meetings, or...
And so...
I'm sorry, what was that, Paul?
Committee reports?
Yes.
Where would we find those?
So the, um, all right, so I'm in public, so, public, I can't, I can't see it.
Library.
In meetings, isn't it under templates right now?
Yeah.
Oh, so active? Under meetings, that was the...
No, it's not, nothing's active.
But that's where it will be, is what you're saying.
Oh, so this is not just the one?
Yes, it will be active. So...
Yes.
Just where you saw meetings, and you saw that, if you are on, um, different committees, I'll show you the, the dropdown. Sorry, go over here to meetings. See, right here says, "Active meetings for school board."
Yes.
And then there's a dropdown.
Oh.
And then there are all the committees. So we don't have anything in there just yet, but...
But that would be...
Yeah. And then Nancy is putting the notes from those committees in the library, under general.
Are they in both places?
Did everybody, did everybody see how to get to the committees?
Nope.
No? Okay.
Above the search bar.
There's multiple search bars.
You click on the meeting.
Here, this search bar?
It says, "Active meetings for school board."
Okay, so when you open that, and then you hit on BGT, then will that, if it, if there's notes there, it'll open the notes?
If there's a meeting, it will open the meeting, and then you'll have to click on that. So you did one in finance. Okay, yeah, so let me show you. So finance, she, she just did, uh, skeleton in finance. Was it finance that you do? Oh, it's not active, mm, it's not ready.
Is it in library?
No, so in library would be the... No, I don't have to be. It's, it's, uh, it's, it's not active. So let me show you, it's in the draft. So see, it's in, it's in the draft. And, and because it's in the draft, nobody sees the draft except Nancy and Kathy, because they're putting it together in the two mics, and, and that's it. So that's why you, you can't see it. So she's got this finance, so you click on it, just like you did the, um, the agenda, and it's view the agenda, print the agenda, it's going to work the exact same way. So we just don't have anything in there just yet.
If it's an active, like, if it's this month, it'll be under active, and then it'll go into the library afterwards?
When she's, after you have your, your meeting, you might want to address that, Nancy. After you have your meeting, and she takes notes, then she's putting those notes in the library, the committee notes in the library. So right here will just be the agenda that you will follow, just like for the board meeting. And then the committee, uh, meeting is the same, and so you go over here to the library, to general, and then, so instead of minutes, it's your committee notes, and it will be here.
Does the, does the board have to approve the committee notes before they're made public?
No.
They won't be made public.
They won't be made public?
Right.
Okay.
We, after committees, we usually send out, um, like, minutes or notes from that, the whole board, so that you know what you're voting on?
The weekly confidential. The weekly confidential.
Uh, not always. Like, personnel and policy, as soon as I get done the meeting, I usually go back to my office, clean it up, and hit, uh, and then send it out to everybody. Sometimes with the confidential, depending on, if it's a Thursday night meeting, and it's the confidential squad the next day, but...
So would the confidential no longer have finance, BGT notes that would be here instead?
No, you, you should send them out separately, don't you? The finance and, uh...
So we would have them in, in the, uh, weekly confidential end here, too?
No, we don't...
Or do they lie there?
Yeah, but we, we don't send out, um, the finance and, and BGT.
No, no, you just put them in the drive.
Right, but we don't send them out with the confidential, do we?
They, they absolutely use them.
I put curriculum, I put the curriculum notes in the confidential.
Oh, you put it in confidential? Yeah, yeah, so we could.
Well, we keep that until we figure out where we're... Because it's just, I mean, I'm not saying just, I'm not trying to finish the, the additional work, but it's pay, it's just a paste, a cut and paste, at, at this point, to put in the confidential? You're not typing twice.
Yeah, and it, actually, right now, if you look under committees, confidential is in there as well. But I don't know if that makes sense to put that in the library or not, I'm not sure.
Is, is the library, anybody can access the library, or just the board?
So with the library, it's public and private, so she can decide, you, you can decide who gets to see what.
Okay, so if we put the confidential in there, we could keep it private?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and there is, there's weekly confidential in the library. That should probably stay in the library.
That's, that's not the, the library, that's the, the template for, so, yeah. But it can go in the, in the library.
Right.
Absolutely.
Can you create another tab?
Uh, another tab over here? No. You can create these, but not over here. Which tab were you interested in? Oh, so typically, typically for that, people would put it in the library, under general, and make it private. So see, that's private? Nobody, nobody sees that, except you all. And now, I'm logged in, so you notice I don't have an executive content area, because mine stops right here. And then I will only have access for about one more week, in case, you know, if they have questions, they can call me. And then that's it, I don't have any more access, it's public. Yes.
I'm just curious why you have a yellow thing on your far left there.
Oh, that's because I clicked on that.
That, I don't have that. You're under library in general?
Mm-hmm. I don't think it's, is it?
I don't have it either.
Oh, okay, good, I feel better then.
Um, you don't have things that are in a draft mode?
But then you got to toggle back and forth from active to draft.
You only have things that are active, so...
Uh, okay. So, yeah, some of the things that we were doing during the training, we were playing around with it, and just doing...
Doing these drafts.
Yeah, and that's probably what you're, because I have it on my screen, too, but I think we created this this afternoon.
Okay, so that's where I go. It's not just your...
Yep, 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 yep. So it's not, it's not cooked yet. It's not, it's not, it's not baked yet.
They will get it when I release it.
Yeah, that's right, so...
Because we're going to have a meeting on the 13th.
That's right.
I'm going to type the notes and give it to you on the 15th for the board meeting.
That makes sense.
Yep. And so there's a release date and an expiration date. So those won't expire, but you might have some things that expire, like events. Then that expired, and then that will go away. Yep. So that's pretty much it.
So, Dr. Cosette, does this mean that the next board meeting will be on paper?
So our data is kept, we have two places. We have, uh, our main server is in Denver, Colorado, and then we have a backup in Sterling, Virginia. So there's always a redundancy of the, of the data. So, and at any point, if the board wants all of their data, you can have it.
Video files?
Yeah.
They can just work off of this?
So he asks if you could load video files, yep, you can.
Yeah, because you could make a copy of the agenda for this, too. So we don't need the...
You can do video files and audio files, yes.
So we're just going to...
Yep. So, so, um, he's asking about, can you load video files of the board meetings? The only way that we can do that right now is through three, uh, mechanisms. YouTube, Vimeo, or Swagit only. Those are, and I don't think you stream like that, yep.
Just to be clear, we can't do any of that, correct?
No. Right, that's right. The only way it can be done, yeah, it, not you.
We can't upload a YouTube video just because we want it.
That's right.
That would make it easier for the public. But they could see the agenda and the minutes and watch the video.
Yeah, if it was in one of those formats, then it, it could be, but that's the only way that we have it.
There was a reason, though, I, I remember when I was on the board, there was a reason why we couldn't use YouTube. I don't remember what it was, if it was a bandwidth issue with our infrastructure, or whatever it was.
Probably was it, if it was a couple of years ago, it probably was a bandwidth issue, because that kind of stuff just eats up bandwidth like crazy, but, uh, I think we're good now with, you know, with bandwidth, so... Yeah.
Something with inappropriate advertising, too.
So, want you to ask everybody about the hard copies and the...
Yeah, so from now on, we probably don't need to have a hard copy of the backup materials, but I guess we could still do a hard copy of the agenda for now, if anybody still would like to have a hard copy of the agenda.
I would.
Yeah, until, until, I think you have to give us 30 to 50 days.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's fine. I mean, that's what we're saying, but if you're... Ultimately, right, we, we want to take baby steps, we want to make sure everyone's comfortable.
Right, because ultimately, you could, you could print out any supporting documentation you personally choose. Like, if you want the financials, a couple pages, you could print that. If you want, you know, you could print that. But this way, it's not all or nothing.
Right, but with the ability to take notes, I mean, you can certainly print, my, my own personal feeling that as board members, you're volunteering, and that you shouldn't have to use your printers at home. So if you, you know, if we, if you wanted a hard copy, we would bring the hard copy. You certainly can print at home, but with the, with the ability to pull up the committee notes, with the ability to put notes right on there, if you're comfortable working that way, you know, it's just, uh, saves paper on that end. And it's, everything's stored in one spot, so...
I think that's great.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. It's fine, this was...
Is there a way to download some of these documents to your personal computer? Because I do a lot of my reading not at home, because I spend a lot of time...
So it's a, it's a website?
Yeah.
And so there's no downloading, you just go to the...
And access it from anywhere.
If there's not Wi-Fi, then I can't read it.
That's true. You have to have internet access and a browser, right.
But if she downloaded it, if Jill downloaded everything, there's the ability to work offline with a lot of things.
Well, the only thing that she could download would be attachments.
Right.
So could I download all the supplemental stuff?
Yeah.
Finances?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, all the, yeah, that's...
That is the stuff that, it takes time, you know, when you really want to get through that, one page at a time, it takes a lot of time to do that. So I, I agree with you. But that will always be there anyway, right?
Yes, yes.
But, oh, but it's the Wi-Fi issue.
My problem is, I read a lot of this, my kids have sports, so I'll sit in my car and I'll read all this stuff. So it's a little bit, so I'm not home every night, and then, you know, when I'm at the ice hockey rink, I got two hours, I'll sit and read the agenda and all the supporting documents, so...
Is it, is it possible to, to have it like this, and also, just like where you put the minutes, to put the actual document attached to it? So you'd have the document in line, the way it's already set up, where you can make notes, but then the attachment of the same document, this way they would be able to download it, then, if they need, if they wanted to. Because you could download, if you could download the attachments, if you made that original document an attachment, you could download it, too. But unless that would cause, if they had changes or something, I don't know how that would work, but...
Yeah. Individual attachments is not a problem, you can download that. The, individual attachments is not a problem, you can download that. And actually, I'm thinking, probably what you could do when you're at home, go ahead and download that...
Right.
And put it on your device so that when you are away, you will have it, and, you know...
All right, I can do that, yeah.
That's the working offline part, right, or no?
Yeah, with, it is just with the attachments, because the site is billed on a website.
Right.
So, which you will have to have internet access. But for any attachments, you can open that, download it, save it to whatever device you want to save it to, and then you can access that offline.
Part of having it all in one place is, as changes come in, it's, if we have all these different versions out there, then which one is the right one? So this is at least, this, um, area houses the final, the final revisions.
So when a new document comes out, will we get an email? Is there like a auto notification process?
So, yes, yes. So that featured, anytime anything is made active and featured, you will get an automatic email notification. So when the agenda is ready for you to see, she's going to make it active and featured, Nancy or Kathy, make it active and featured. Soon as she makes it fe- featured, that triggers an email notification, you will get that. Same thing with, um, anything in the library, so like your superintendent's weekly update. If he, if that's done, she makes, she can make, she can feature that. Soon as she features that, you get an email, you'll, and it's still, it'll be a link, so instead of the agenda, this time it will be to the library, to the weekly update, or it could be to the policy, for a policy, or whatever it is. Yes, so you will get automatic email notifications.
Those notifications will go to the, whatever email I guess you have configured, but it'll be the school email.
Yes, so which email, yeah. The school email.
So...
Yeah, we only use school emails for all kinds of reasons, but...
Sorry for all the questions here, but I just wanna understand, so if there's an update to the agenda, for instance, you have a, a, an item number that was either removed or changed, would that trigger an email also?
Yep.
So we would know, like, we might say, all right, this is gonna be reviewed tonight, and now they, then they change it, we would know that.
Yep. And so, after she makes the agenda active, and you all get it, if they make any other changes, as soon as she's entering that change and she saves it, she will get a pop-up, she or Kathy will get a pop-up, and it will ask you, do you wanna send an email notification that something has changed? And sometimes you do, sometimes you don't, because she might discover, oh, that's a typo. And so, no, you don't wanna get a notification like that. Now, what our system also does, it compiles all of those changes so that every time she makes a change, you're not getting an email. So it will compile it for six hours, and then it will send it out, so you, you don't get 10 emails, you'll just get one.
But if she makes a change towards like, a couple, like, you know, Wednesday afternoon, can she trigger the email so we know there's like one last change?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. So with this share, she can, she can do it with that share.
Okay.
So when she's in that meeting, and it's like, mm, no, I want you to know about this right now. So if, um, if that item has changed, she can go right over here and do that share, and click on email, and send, and send it out. Yep. And then when you get it, when you click on it, you open it, that one will be highlighted, it will be yellow, it'll open up to that. Yep.
Do you have an app so we can do it on our smartphone?
No, we, we don't have an, we don't have an app, there's nothing to download.
Get on your smartphone. Get a document, and you see there's a error, something you wanna bring to their attention. Can you do it from within the system?
Yeah, so he said, if you get the document and you see there's an error, can you bring it to their attention? Absolutely you can. And what you do, so like if it's on 4A, you can go over here to share and send an email to Nancy or, or Kathy, and say, I found an error here. Because it's, it's easy enough to, to make an error, and, and not be able to, to see it, and somebody else will spot, and you say, don't go on it, I was trying so hard. Mm-hmm. Yep, and so then you can send, you click on that share, and it will open up your email, and you can send an email to Nancy or, or Kathy, say, oh, I, I've just found an error. Yep, and they can correct it.
Above that, you can, I see Monroe pay stubs, what is that?
That's a, that's a different, that has nothing to do with this website.
Right.
That's just the bookmarks that whoever has signed into this computer has up there. It's a way to see our paychecks.
Oh.
But it has nothing to do with board docs.
Thank you so much, because I didn't even notice that.
It's just the bookmarks of whoever has that computer.
Oh, I see.
So if Nancy's logged into the computer, or the tech person is logged into the computer, that's all of their bookmarks for the website.
Oh.
Okay, so we're not gonna be doing any more paper copies of the backup materials, but who would like to continue getting a hard copy of the agenda?
That's my thing of choice.
Wait, I, I thought we just discussed it now. I'd still like the backup until I'm...
Yeah, I would too.
The backup? It's a lot of backup.
What can I tell about computers?
At least one more month, to give me a month to play with it and then get...
It's not their report cards, they took it...
All right, we'll do it for another month to get all the backup, and then...
Nancy, you're taking notes on it?
Jill and Sean want to meet in here now.
One day.
Who wants just a paper copy of, or a hard copy?
I don't know if everybody heard that.
Who, who would like to have a, a cop, a hard copy of all the attachments for the next month, for the February meeting? Marv, you would like one, right?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
A hard copy of all the attachments?
I'd like a hard copy, yes.
So Marv, Michelle, and Jill. And then who would like to have a hard copy of just the agenda?
I'd like a hard copy of the agenda. I mean, that's, that's the easy part, but I actually...
Jill, do you need a hard copy of the agenda?
Yes, please.
Jill needs a hard copy of the agenda, and I'd like to have a hard copy of just of the agenda. Ken, you're okay? And Patty? Okay.
Yeah, not a problem.
As in, what about Mary too? We can have an answer to that. I don't need a hard copy.
Weekly confidential's can we put on here?
Yeah, I can re, I'll read the, yeah.
So that will, that will go just to Marv.
Okay. Nobody uses it from the...
The training?
I believe so.
Okay. Well, so I have one last thing. I have, um...
Put us in celebration or...
Well, I only have two left.
Oh, she does.
It's like, who wants to eat dinner at 4:30?
Can move it again?
So I've got my easy button, because that really was easy.
That was easy.
Yes. And I usually give a gold chocolate star, so Nancy already got hers, and Kathy, and immediately gobbled it up. So I usually give a gold chocolate star to the board member who asks a lot of insightful questions, and over there, what's his name, is that Ken?
That's Ken.
Hold on, it worked. I would die if this gets...
One last thing, don't forget to log out.
Oh, log out.
Log out. You always have to remember to log out.
You were, you were asking a lot, something...
And on your own computer.
Wow, I come to you, hasn't it? How do you log out?
I really should have, because I'm the one who guessed that she was...
Drop down by your name.
Hit it right on the head.
Okay, so I, I guess that concludes the training, unless somebody has any other questions that they need to ask at this point?
No more gold stars, so...
That's right.
Edible gold stars?
Yep, and so when you log out, you notice that it says, enter public site, authenticate. That is what you're going to see when you get that email notification, and you go to authenticate. So when you see that, you have logged out.
Okay. Thank you, Sylvia, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for tuning in.
Thank you very much.
This is very simple.
Sylvia, I think that they were a good class, wouldn't you say?
Yes, they were. That was easy, that was... Look, I did not have to hit my no button one time.
Reject button.
Because I do have a no button.
Okay.
Or a no app, I have a no app.
Don't we have to wait till 4:00 or 5:00?
Well, at this time, I think Nancy has given us a dinner at, in the conference room, so we need a, a motion and a second to go have like a 40-minute recess.
I will definitely make that motion.
Okay. Mr. Retske, second by Ms. Arminio, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I forgot that I was tampered with.
Is there opposed? Marv's opposed.
Oh, again.
You don't wanna eat, Marv?
Wasn't this advertised for 5 o'clock?
Yes.
The meeting?
Yes.
Why are you taking a 40-minute break?
Because we said...
Because we had told the public that we would start the regular portion of the meeting at 7:00. And because we thought your company would be so good, we'd enjoy your company for dinner.
Okay, wanna hear my famous story about computers?
Yes.
When I started teaching...
Oh, can we hear it in the other room?
You're on TV.
I started teaching.
Yeah, you're still on...
Kids wanted report cards, they got the report card first period, all day long, and each period, the kids got it signed by the teacher. At the end of the day, one day, the kids got their report cards home. Now with computers, it takes two weeks. But this is marvelous, we're automated. Is that going out to the public? That's out in the public.
Learn how to do this too, right?
Tell the computers.
Sure, you by leave.
At this time, the Board of Education will move back into public session from a recess
that we just had. We started our meeting tonight at 5:00. The board went into training for, um, a data management system that we're gonna be using in the future for all of our meetings. So at this time, we will go to number seven on the agenda, and we'll have our reports from our student board members.
Hi, um, the first thing that I'm gonna talk about is the dress drive that we have at our high school. It's for juniors and seniors. Girls can donate fairly new dresses and accessories, um, for their junior and senior prom. And the murder mystery was held last week on Thursday and Friday, and multiple students were inducted into the International Thespian Society.
Okay, so a few weeks ago, the high school sent a few students to the annual DECA Regional Competition, and a few, uh, I don't know exactly how many, but I know a lot of students are gonna be moving on to the state, uh, level in a couple of weeks. And also, a couple of weeks ago was the Model UN trip, where they went to their annual conference in Hershey, Pennsylvania. We won a few awards there, including outstanding delegation, and we had one student elected to be part of the program staff for next year, and some, a few students won some individual awards, like best written country research paper.
Thank you. Are there any questions for our students? Okay, then we will go to number seven, uh, number eight on the agenda, and we're very pleased this evening to have an opportunity to honor the Monroe Township High School Marching Band. They were selected recently to attend, as a representative of the state of New Jersey, to attend the 75th anniversary of Pearl Harbor. And, um, they went to Hawaii, and they performed, and I understand they had a wonderful time. And the administration and the Board of Education are very proud of our students and how they represented Monroe Township. So at this time, Dr. Kozak and I would like to award them with certificates, to thank them for the job that they've done, and for how, what a great job they did in Hawaii in representing Monroe.
Absolutely.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Alfred Haddinger, I'm the marching band director here at Monroe Township High School, and thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you to the Board of Education for their support throughout this whole experience with this trip, to, and for allowing us to be here tonight to celebrate all the success of our students. This trip was almost two years in the making, to, to plan all of this and to put it all together, and the reward in the end, to be a part of such a significant historical event for these students. It's an experience they'll never forget, and probably, at least for me, one of my most memorable experiences here in Monroe, and for their time in high school, probably the one thing they'll remember most about their time here in district. So, uh, I'd like to thank Mr. Chirello and Mr. Griffin, the other two directors who are here with us today. And without further ado, I'd like to call up some of our students. Some of them may not be here, but we can, uh, we'll read your names, no particular order, but, uh, we'll hand you your certificates, and you can come on up and pick them up, so, thank you. Oh, and there's a video to show at the end.
Video, maybe at the end we can show it?
Absolutely.
What would you like?
We, whatever, whatever's easiest for you, doesn't matter.
And then they can watch.
All right, so Amelia Hansick? Not here? Okay, Emily Hoven? All right. Vadehi? Antera? No? All right. Puna Bawali? Come on up once you hear your name. Brianna Barbarice? Emily Becker?
There you go.
Casey Belko? Manon Bot? Theo Bloom? Waverly Chu? Alexander Down? Christopher Di Pietro? Nicholas Di Pietro? Dominic Dcheck? Rachel Fernandez? Gary Fernicola? Amanda Fisher? Cameron Fuller? Anna Garbowski? Shannon Glynn? Doug Hoven? Abigail Isaacs? Emma Isaacs? Jackie Jordan? Mitchell Joseph? Ethan Kaiser? Ashley Kaluda? Graham Kozak? No relation. Luke Latanzi? Austin Lasojio? Elena Malich? Yash Mathur? Andrew McCabe? Emily Miller? Gregory Necrosovas? Oh, Donnie Owen? Nigel Pacheco? Gabriella Pacheco? Kea Pai? Jenna Poutenstein? Arushi Pandey? Rohan Pandit? Brandon Park? Alexa Corino? Anshul Rana? Jamie Roth? Kaylee Rikinski? Ryan Rudnick? John V. Sisadri? Marcus Ship? Marcus Ship? We're working on our handshake lines. We don't practice that in marching band too much, sorry. Caitlin Samoskowitz? Monique Singh? Caitlin Visaki? Carolyn Visaki? Caroline Waksbunske? Eric Shawn? And Ryan Yusufsi? Thank you, Dr. Kozak. Thank you, Mrs. Kaliponovic. Thank you, Dr. Alvik. Thank you to the entire Board of Education for everything you've done to help make this possible for all of our students and for your continued support. Best band trip ever. Sure. This is video of the parade, yes. I believe so. I believe we're going to be seeing a video highlight of the parade performance here, which was through the main downtown streets through Waikiki. That day was a very warm day. The students were outside in the park. They did a joint performance that afternoon with the Marine Corps Pacific Band, plus all of the other groups that were there from all over the country, bands from as far away as, I believe, Nebraska, North Carolina. And as the only band from New Jersey, it was quite a unique experience for our students to get to meet other students from other areas outside of our own domain or bubble here that we're so used to. So this is a video of us performing in the parade. It was dark out at that point, but even in December there, it's still way warmer than it is here. So it was quite, it was quite a wonderful experience and really moving to see the amount of people in the, in the streets watching us perform and showing these students the kind of respect that they deserve for all of their hard work. New Jersey, this is the Monroe Township.
Again, we want to thank our marching band for representing Monroe Township. It's been an honor for all of us up here and in the school district and in the community to know that you are representing us in the best way possible, and it's creating a memory for you that I know you will never forget. So thank you. Okay, so we're going to continue with the rest of our agenda. You do not have to stay if you don't wish to. Our students. We'll give you a couple minutes to leave before we continue. Makes you feel very, well, proud and patriotic.
Yes. Tell them free sandwiches.
Okay, so this'll work well. Okay, as our students and their families leave, we're going to continue with the agenda. And we go to committee reports. Recently, the committee assignments have been given out, but I don't believe that any, any of the committees had an opportunity to meet yet. It is our hope that all of our committee meetings will be held on the same day. We're hoping that it'll be Mondays the week before the board meeting and not the week of the board meeting, because it makes it easier to get things on the agenda and have changes made. So the first committee meetings will be held on Monday, February 6th, and all the committee assignments, as well as the scheduled dates of meetings, will be online, will be held online. So at this time, we'll go to the public forum. And as I stated at the last Board of Education meeting on January 4th, January, yes, January 4th, the purpose of public forum is for the, it gives the opportunity for the public, for public comment on any school issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents. And it gives our Board of Education the opportunity to listen to your concerns. It is not supposed to be a Q and A session, and we are probably one of the very few districts in the state of Mon, in the state of New Jersey that does a Q and A. I don't feel that we need to eliminate the Q and A sessions, but we are sending our policy back to the Policy Committee for Review so that we can make it fair to everybody, so that we can eliminate some of the, like, 10-minute Q and A sessions that we've had in the past. But that will make it fair for you two to get your questions answered. So for tonight, it would be helpful, if you have a comment, to make your comments first so that you have the time to do that, so we don't run out of your time. And then if you have questions, we'll be glad to answer that. So at this time, anyone wishing to speak to the agenda, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and we are going to adhere to our three-minute time limit. So is there anyone wishing to speak at this time? To the agenda?
To the agenda means the, sorry, I'll first tell my name. I'm Dr. Prakash Parab, 33 Dana Drive. When you say to the agenda means whatever is there in the attachment?
Yes, anything that is on the agenda, you may speak to.
Okay, then let me see. I have one item regarding, we see that many teachers in high school and mid-school have retired or retiring. I see in the agenda, okay?
Yes.
So the question is, are we replacing them, replacing these permanent positions with experienced teachers or new starters? New starters means the teachers who have recently graduated. So the question is precise. Are we replacing those permanent positions with experienced teachers or new starters?
Okay, I will let Dr. Kozak answer that question.
Sure, absolutely, Madam President. Yeah, I'd be happy to answer that. We really, it's one of the most important things that we can do in a school district is to hire the very best educator, educators for the children. In some cases, it could be somebody with a number of years of experience. In other cases, it might be somebody who is, has just graduated from college with their teaching degree. In other cases, we have had several teachers that we've hired who have worked in other, other industries, such as finance, engineers, different areas, and then they go back and get their teaching degree. But it's, it's very important to us that we get hired the very best educator for the position. So we really don't differentiate, we don't just go for new teachers, nor do we go just for teachers with experience. It depends on the position.
So the second question is, the experience in teaching, whether it is industry, academia, or elsewhere, banking, finance, whatever it is. I know there are devoted people who have come and joined our teaching schools, so we welcome it. But I want to make sure that the budget or the cost, to save money, we're not compromising the quality. Want to make it sure. So I want, Dr. Kozak, your comments on this, are you committed in hiring the best without any concern about the budget?
I can say emphatically, yes. And not only can I say yes, that I want to hire the very best teacher or the very best candidate for that position, I will also say that this Board of Education has supported Dr. Alvik, myself, and others with the candidates that we have come forth with, regardless of how much it costs to hire that teacher. I think I can speak on behalf of the Board of Education that they too want the very best teacher to come into our school district, because I feel that we are, we offer a more than a quality, or a very high-quality education to our students, and I want to continue to do that.
I like that, and we respect that, and we will follow up, because it is, after all, the performance of the students will speak in each subject, each teacher versus the performance, and we'd like to see that presented to us, to see that you all are agree on what we are discussing, and I like it, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Good evening, everyone. Andy Pelory, 16 St. James Street. A couple of questions. There was supposed to be a $1 million surplus from the past budget. Could somebody tell the public on what we're doing with the money?
Mr. Gorsky, do you have an answer for that one?
Yes. Evening, Mr. Pelory. In the audit presentation a couple meetings ago, the surplus number that was generated from the year-end June 30, 2016, was broken out in several categories. There was approximately a $2 million reserve surplus that the state requires statutorily that you keep on hand. What's most noteworthy to the Board and most concerning is what's known as the excess surplus calculation. That is, the revenues that were recognized in excess of the revenues that were budgeted for that year, and we had many, because we had new proprietary funds and things like that. And also, the savings that were recognized throughout the year from expenditures being less than the appropriations that were put in the budget. So the excess surplus calculation last year was about $6 million. It exceeded that of the previous year by about $1 million. So if your question is, where does that $1 million go, by statute, it has to carry over two budget years and recycle as a revenue source with the intent of easing the burden on taxes. So that, that excess surplus will carry over from the year-ending June 30, 16, to the 1718 budget, where it's automatically appropriated as a revenue source to that budget.
So it's going to reflect in the June 30th, 2017 to 2018?
1718 budget that we're working on now.
Right now, okay.
That will be the next one that we will present to the Board.
So the public is going to see some sort of a tax credit, because the million dollars is in there, like 20 cents or something?
The taxpayers will see a million dollars of revenues that, through the effective management of the budget, are recycled over to either have that intent of reducing the tax levy, or by meeting the needs of the 476 proposed new students that we're anticipating for next year.
So which one are you choosing to do?
That's up to the Board. We haven't completed the preparation of the budget yet, but we will have a lot of discussion on that at the Finance Committee level, at the other curriculum committee levels, and also before the public at this Board level.
At some point, I think the Township members would like to see the increase in tax levy that's coming to the Board of Ed, because along with the increase in the number of homes, I'm assuming that the tax revenues are going up as well. I constantly hear the 4,400 additional students coming in, but would like to see what the financial improvement also. It's just a comment. On the agenda, to the Chair, there's an item number J that says the Student Achievement Data Agreement. It's recommended that the members of the Monroe Board approve a $43,286 worth of funding for Board and Performance Matters LLC. Could you explain what that is, and has it been gone through the curriculum?
Sure. Yeah. It's a, it's considered a data aggregator, and it's basically, contains all the student data that student, well, either state assessments, local assessments, and we use that to analyze where students are. So it's a longitudinal, has a longitudinal use as well. So we can look at students either individually or as a group. We can see how they're progressing over, with various data points, over, with, using a number of assessments, to see that they're progressing. We can then use that to measure interventions, to decide how we want to apply interventions. We can use it to make sure that there's equity between our, let's say, our elementary schools. There's a lot of different ways that we can use it. So we just started with it last year. This is a renewal, and we're going to continue.
So the decision's made that we're going to continue?
Well, that's what it's only, it's, if the Board votes for it, yes, that's what it's on the agenda for.
Okay, it's on the agenda to be approved, not it's approved yet. The reason I'm asking is, is this a tool that's being used by other schools? Is this a necessary tool, that we need to invest $43,000 worth of taxpayers' money into the system?
South Brunswick, I think East Brunswick is using it as well. It's used in various states, but they're the two districts that I remember off the top of my head. I'm pretty sure East Brunswick as well. But it is used by a number of school districts. It's not new. It's been around for several years. And it's a good way to have some sort of system in place where you can do data, data analysis. That, that analytics is very, very important, both in private organizations and certainly in school districts as well.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
Chairman, Dr. Prakash Parab, again, 33 Dana Drive, because there was a discussion on budget, so I want to follow, you know, I sent questions to Dr. Kozak yesterday on that.
Is, were your questions pertaining to the agenda?
It is, you answered the questions on the budget, so it is...
Well, it wasn't the budget, it was a budget item.
Yeah.
So it's the same budget item?
No, there was a special questions on special needs students. So should I leave it in the last?
Yes, because...
I will do that, I have no problem.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then at this time, we will close the public forum, and we will go to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Kozak?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam President. Excuse me. The, I attended, along with our Board President, Ms. Kaliponovic, Mr. Mayo, and Ms. Armaniyo, excuse me, we were at the middle school to hear the jazz and percussion ensembles perform. And just as we recognize our marching band tonight, I just wanted to say kudos to the middle school students, the jazz students and percussion ensemble students for doing just an outstanding job. The, you know, hopefully we'll feature them, maybe on Channel 28 at some point, but individually, they, some of the students have gone on, I think, maybe regional or state competitions, but they just did an outstanding job. And there was a question, because Mr. Snyder, one of the band directors, referred to vertical teaching, just to explain what vertical teaching is. So briefly, each of the band directors, excuse me, has a specialty. One might be a brass player, another instructor might be a woodwind player, maybe someone's a specialist in percussion. And in some districts, they'll teach all the instruments, and it's really not the best way to do it. It's like having a science specialist, somebody who's a biology specialist, and teach all the science. They, they can do it, but how much nicer is it for the kids if you have somebody who specializes in that? So this vertical teaching allows the scheduling of the teachers to go from the elementary, middle, and the high school and teach those kids that they have that specialty in. And when you see, let's say, the percussion ensemble, you know, Mr. Snyder is just an amazing percussionist, professional outside of the school, and what he has those kids doing, and he's just one example, that all the rest of the band directors are the same. But it's really incredible to see what the kids are doing. So that's the idea behind the term "vertical teaching." That's what that means. I would like to bring special recognition to our Board of Ed members. January is, at least in New Jersey, the New Jersey Board of Education Recognition Month, School Board of Education Recognition Month. And, you know, many people may not be aware of the many, the number of hours that board members put in behind the scenes, behind the meetings here. They're looking at materials, they're preparing for meetings, they come to committee meetings. They, they, sometimes they're out attending state functions that are related to education, running all over the place, doing that. It's, it's really, really an incredible commitment. They receive no money for anything they're doing, and I just think it's important that we recognize all of the hard work that the Board does and the support that they afford myself and Dr. Alvik and Mr. Gors... Alvek and Mr. Gorsky, and the rest of the administrators and staff throughout the district, and ultimately the students. So, I know you usually don't like attention brought to you, but I would just like to offer a round of applause to our Board of Education.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So, there is, as has been mentioned at the board meetings, we're focused, as always, on increasing our fair share, what we consider our fair share of state funding, and a number of board members are very interested in that, and we have been, you know, taking some efforts to increase what we're doing, in addition to what has already been done over several years, even to the point of writing legislation and, you know, meeting with legislators and State President Sweeney, and so we're continuing that push. And to that end, I've been in contact with seven other school districts who are also underfunded, and we're trying to combine our efforts and work together to raise the awareness. And we're hoping that our legislators will hear that and really take some concrete action to help us with this, the plight we're in. So, this Friday, I'm going to be speaking with a select committee of State President Sweeney in Kingsway Regional School District. It's about an hour and a half south of here, and I'm going to be speaking there. The, I think tomorrow, Mr. Chiarella, are you, you going to something tomorrow for the mayors?
Yeah, there's a meeting of mayors in Intrenton where the various plans are going to be explained to the, to the mayors that attend, and I'm planning on attending that.
Right. And Mr. De Mayo, I believe you have attended some things in that regard as well, correct?
Yeah.
Right, so, I just want the public to understand that we are working, we're reaching out in many different ways to try to continually raise the awareness with our legislators on both sides of the aisle, that we really need to be funded appropriately for the influx of students that we have received. This flat funding is not helping the Monroe Township School District. Also, one of the candidates for governor, Mr. Murphy, will be appearing at ES, I'm sorry, ECSNJ, and I'll be going to that meeting as well in February where he'll be presenting his side on education, and it'll be, there'll be a Q and A, so I'll be able to ask questions on what his viewpoint is on funding. Of course, I'll bring that information back to the board and back to the public. And I would just, also, on the agenda, I'm going to the actual part of the agenda, I would just like to make a correction, that item I on the agenda, under Board Action, needs to be discarded. That should not have been on there. That is a mistake. That is a policy on nepotism that did not pass at the last board meeting, and it's being sent back to the Policy Committee for review. What is being, it's being sent back to the Policy Committee for review?
That was not a second, that was not a second reading. Tonight would have been.
That was the first reading.
Right.
But I don't think it passed. So, if it didn't pass, it either goes back to the Policy Committee for revision. Yes.
So, if you would, just discard item I, and then that'll go back to the policy.
What page is that?
Oh.
Seventeen.
Thank you. That's seventeen. And with that, Madam President, that concludes my superintendent report, and I would like to move items on the personnel agenda.
Okay. On the nepotism?
No.
Well, he didn't move it yet.
Okay.
Okay. Like to recommend the items A through double J for approval from the Board of Education.
So moved.
Mr. Chiarella, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. De Mayo? Now, we'll take comments or questions. Ms. Arminio?
The only comment I have at this point is, when you speak to people regarding state funding, can we include impact fees on developers as a comment? Because that will help Monroe in particular, or developing municipalities. We keep, we keep being told that impact fees are illegal. Well, they're only illegal because the state legislature hasn't made them legal or put some kind of funding in place where we could have that. So, I think along with saying we're underfunded, I think we could comment on some type of impact fees for developers, especially mass developers like what is going on in Monroe. That seems to, the developers are getting the benefit and the taxpayers are getting the cost. So, if you could just make a statement or put that in, I think everybody would agree that that would be, I mean, we get that from the public all the time. If you go to several meetings, if you go to meetings at the council, the board, the zoning and planning, the public is constantly coming up and saying, well, why can't we ask the builders for things? So, and that would be the state legislature. So, they might not want to take money out of their own pocket as readily as, make it a little easier for developers to contribute. Even if it's not an entire school, I mean, developers contribute to land and things like that for other reasons, they may be able to do that. So, I think that the state legislature should consider New Jersey changing some of the regulations for developers that impact a school in such a way.
That's a great idea, because it doesn't hurt, we can ask. The worst they could do is say no, and it doesn't hurt us.
And actually, the municipality can ask. We can't demand, and we can't withhold an approval of development rights because a developer refuses, but we certainly can ask. The municipality asks developers all the time to do things, to put, to put in, you know, streets, to, they get wa, things get waived. I mean, developers are willing to do certain things for the municipalities. I think we should ask, at the very least.
Thank you. Mr. Chiarella?
I just want to back up with what Ms. Arminio just said. I totally agree with that. And also, though, if you're going to, if you're going to speak, and I think you said you were going to speak at the meeting on Friday.
Yes.
That if you could also ask them to look into strengthening our pay-to-play laws and creating some mandates that would not only go after, or strengthen pay-to-play, but strengthen the violations of the spirit of the law, which is what we have a lot of, you know, where we, where there's a quid pro quo deals and things where we go, you know, outside of municipalities, where you might have a developer or a special services business, for instance, located in one town, they can't outright just give politicians donations to run and, you know, for their parties and things like that. So, what they'll do is give donations to the part, the same party in other towns, and this is, this is, this goes on in both parties, so, you know, I just want to be clear on that. And then what they do is, you know, then they'll, so they'll give to that party in another county and another town, and then they reciprocate. And you'll have their special services or maybe in a developer in that area give to Middlesex County, for instance. So, I think they need to make sure that, that the spirit of the law isn't violated, number one, and then, number two, that none of them, including those legislators, are accepting that, that kind of money. They bundle it through PACs, they bundle it through the super PACs, so that they can hide it and wash it out. That has to end. If you want to end the development that's going on here and the things that are happening here, we need to, we need to stop politicians from being able to benefit from that and maintain a stranglehold on power through that, through those devices, through those financial devices.
Thank you, Mr. Chiarella.
And thank you, by the way, for, for doing that, representing us.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
Any other question? Mr. Russo?
Regarding the letter-writing campaign, we had worked on a couple of months ago. The letter was finalized, and it was going to be posted on the website for the public to draw down and send off to the legislators. Is that dead, or?
Do you have an answer to that? Because I wasn't involved in that. Okay.
Yes. Mr. Russo's referencing a letter-writing campaign that we had worked collaboratively on. We had written a letter demonstrating some of the funding inequities here in the district, and the letter was going to be posted on the website, and it could be downloaded by residents and then submitted to a list of representatives that we would also have correspondingly on the website. A meeting with our board president and some legislators brought up some issues with that letter, and the board president had, had, former, I beg your pardon, former board president had, had tabled that for further board discussion.
Because I still think that the campaign is worthwhile. I think it's the best way to, to cultivate the, the public, to get them to support anything that's going to be done later, and maybe it should have been done a year ago, when, when those committees were formed for the Student Growth Advisory, and whatever steering committees were created. Should have been part of that process, let's say.
Madam?
Yes. Mr. Gorsky?
Matter of fact, it was done previously. I had drafted a letter a couple of years ago that was posted on our website with the current list of legislators at that time, and if I recall correctly, we had about 1,100 letters that were generated as a response to that initiative. So, it is good. It does draw on the residents, and there's power in numbers, and the legislators do respond to those type of things if they're followed through on.
Because I just think that whatever we do to communicate regarding funding needs to be looked at from a very broad view.
Anyone else from the board? Comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll have a roll call. Dr. Kozak's personnel.
Personnel items A through double J. Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. De Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lang?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
So, abstaining with the exception of letters or items D, F, and H where I vote yes.
Thank you, sir. And Mrs. Kaliponovic?
Yes.
Madam Board President, personnel items A through double J has passed.
Mr. Rutske, did you vote on the board action items?
I don't know.
We didn't vote, we didn't get there.
Then I think I did it wrong.
Yeah.
It's not the first time I've done that.
Because that's on board action.
I lost track. My apologies. I'll try again next. We'll go around.
Do you want to vote on the personnel items?
No.
Okay.
Abstain on all personnel items.
Yeah, I'm so sorry. You caught me in a moment of distraction.
That's because we started early.
Madam Board President, motion still passes.
Okay, thank you.
Board action?
Yes.
I would like to recommend items A through M excluding letter I for approval.
So moved.
Mr. Braverman? Is there a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Chiarella? Are there any comments or questions on the board action items? Mr. Chiarella?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of questions. One is on L. So, what I'd like to know on that is, I'm not, I'm not sure I understand what violent substance abuse, estimated violence vandalism costs for the period of 9/1, 16 through 1/24/17, and it says the incident was damage to the property, but there's no cost listed. Is there, is there a cost associated with this?
Dr. Kozak? L, it's on page 18.
Yeah, I'm looking at L right now. I will look up the background material on that to see what the actual cost is, was, if any. There might not have been any cost if it was something repaired by one of our maintenance staff, or if it was, if it was something minor. Back on December 9th, to be honest with you, I do read all the items, but I don't recall that particular one, but as we're going through, I have the background materials, and I will certainly look that up. Okay?
And I just have one more question.
Okay.
On M, I'm, I, I, I read the resolution, so I know what that's, you know, what it's saying, but I just wanted to voice my opinion as far as the charter schools go. So, I think that board members, you know, that, or need to speak up with regards to that. I think that, I firmly believe in our public education system, and I would imagine that all of our board members do, or we wouldn't be here, but I also, I just want to say that I think that I fully support this resolution. We should not be, we should not be taking money from public schools and using them to fund charter schools. And I just, I don't want to be, you know, overly analytical, but I just wanted to get my opinion out, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Mrs. Lang?
I also wanted to make a comment regarding M, the resolution for the charter schools. Number one, we listed, it lists Thomas Edison Energy Charter, Smart Charter School as Franklin, North Brunswick, and South Brunswick. I think it's important to note that that school is also opening in Old Bridge, so that there really will be a next-door neighbor. So, I do know that there is a very active parent group fighting, in the Old Bridge parents fighting having the charter school come into their schools system and, you know, taking the money away from our public schools and also in East Brunswick. And I do think that unfortunately with the, the current state of affairs of our new president recommending the Secretary of Education, who is a very highly involved in charter schools and a proponent of charter schools, that that's another place that we should be looking, that if we really do believe in public education, that we need to get our words down to our representatives in Washington, that she might not be the best choice for what we need to take care of our students and our teachers.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. De Mayo?
Just with regard to this resolution, just when I found out that Hatifa was looking to expand, I reached out to Dan Benson and Linda Greenstein, and Dan Benson has written a letter to the Acting Commissioner, Kimberly Harrington, on our behalf, so, and I'm still waiting to hear from Linda Greenstein.
Okay, great. Ms. Arminio?
I, I just have a question. When Ms. De Mayo contacts Mr. Benson, is it on the recommendation of the board? Is she speaking for the board?
No, I'm speaking.
She's not speaking for the board.
As a parent.
Okay, so that's how you're contacting him?
Yes.
Okay, so that's not.
We don't talk board business.
No, but I mean, the full opinion of the board was not expressed on that?
Nope, not at all.
Okay. When we had a resolution last time on the expansion of the East Brunswick Charter School, I, I voted no for that. I believe, and I believe all of the things about charter schools taking away from public education, I definitely am 100% in favor of correcting any of our public schools if they need it. However, this resolution to me is particularly broad, and it's a little far-reaching, in my opinion. I think there may be exceptions once in a while if a community really needs to consider a, a charter school for, for some reason. So, I, I'm a little hesitant because of the language of this, and again, I think it's overly broad, but on the whole, I am in favor of not having charter schools, you know, take over on a, on a wide range of things. But I, I think this leaves no room for an exception where, and I have my own experiences in my business where I have been in communities where the schools are not, in some parents' cases, appropriate for their children, and they have gone to charter schools, and those children have benefited from it. So, it's sort of a catch-22, and it's, it's certainly a dilemma for me, but as I mentioned, when it's, when it's focused and honed in on certain aspects of charter schools, I'm definitely would vote for a resolution not to either expand them or create them, but in this case, I think M is a little just too broad. I just wanted to make it clear.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Russo?
Just, just to get back to that letter-writing campaign, we didn't get a date on it. Are we going to do it soon? I know we have everything in place. Do we have a timeframe?
I guess it's something that we're going to have to look at again, because I, I wasn't involved with the, with the talk about the letter-writing campaign, that was the former president, so we'll, it's something that we'll have to have a conversation with again. Okay. Seeing no further comments or questions, we'll have a roll call. Mr. Gorsky?
Thank you, Madam Board President. Board action items A through M with the exception of I. Mrs. Arminio?
Yes on everything, no on M.
No on M. Thank you. Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes on everything, but I'm going to abstain from L until we have a cost.
So noted. Thank you. Mrs. De Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lang?
I recuse on G and yes on everything else.
Recuse on G and yes on everything else. Thank you.
Yes on everything and no on M.
Mr. Rutske?
This is my turn, right? So if that's the case, then I, again, abstain on all items with the exception of E, A, F, E, F, and H where I vote yes. And I would question, there's no asterisk on M for the Hattika, but if they're expanding, they're maybe expanding grades-wise up to the high school?
No, they're expanding kindergarten and first grade currently, but in the future, they are looking to expand the rest of their elementary school grades.
And that's why I thought, that's why I thought maybe I could vote on that, but it looks like I can't.
I don't think so. But your district could bring a resolution.
Well, and we, tomorrow night, we will be doing that.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
On everything?
I just want to double-check M. With the members present, we would need five affirmative votes on M. And I have an affirmative from Mr. Braverman, Mr. Chiarella, Mrs. De Mayo, Mrs. Lang, and Mrs. Koloponowicz. So yes, M has passed also.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and at this time, I believe you finished with your reports.
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I am finished, that, that finishes my report, Madam President, thank you.
And we will go to the Business Administrator's Report. Mr. Gorsky?
Thank you, Madam Board President. As part of the Business Administrator's Report tonight, before I asked and recommend action items A through J to the Board of Education, I was asked to give an update on our land exploration process as related to the Student Growth Advisory Committee and our, our need to expand our schools. And as you could see on the PowerPoint slide, we have divided the township into four quadrants to help present where we are looking for land and some of the 18 areas. This map here shows Monroe Township. The purple in the middle of the pink section is Jamesburg. And the top green section, we will call quadrant number one. That is the northern quadrant with the areas that contain Mill Lake and Woodland. Quadrant number two is broken up into a lower central area with Barclay Brook and Brookside, and a mid-central quadrant with the high school and the middle school. And finally quadrant number four, where we're experiencing the most growth, in the southern quadrant, which is the area with Apple Garth and Oak Tree. Mr. Teig, our facility director, and I started a process by looking at Google Maps. And we were looking for parcels of land in areas that we had the most growth, that were attractive in many ways to the school district for building, including that they were flat, that they were non-wetland areas, that they had, most importantly, utility service areas, because that's a big infrastructure expense, otherwise not, that the roads and everything were compatible with that type of school that we were planning there. We looked at two parcels of land in the northern quadrant. We looked at nine in the lower central quadrant. We looked at three in the mid-central quadrant. And we found four in the southern quadrant, three of which are very viable options for the board. I would like to go through those very briefly for the board. And then, as you may have seen on the agenda, there's a closed session, executive session discussion for land acquisition in a very early stage pertaining to one of these properties. Property number one, we discussed before, that's Church and Mount Rhodes. That's in the number four quadrant. Per the board resolution, we are exploring that still with an engineering, architectural, and environmental studies report, which is still ongoing. That, that, that particular piece of land has some very negative characteristics. Number one, the timeline for ownership is at least nine to 12 months away for the township to take ownership from Toll Brothers, and then, and then the property would be deeded over to the Board of Ed. Separately, it would require an extensive amount of capital infrastructure for road widening. It also has wetlands that would have to be mitigated. It has some environmental issues with protected habitat. And at an expensive consideration, it is outside of the sewer service zone, which would require some heavy infrastructure there. Number two, we looked at an area on east of number three, mid-central quadrant. And it's a proposed residential estate site. We reviewed the site plans, and unfortunately, there's too much wetlands for further consideration for that property. We looked at property number three, we'll call it, in the number three mid-central quadrant. These are residential properties. The owner unfortunately was not interested in sale. However, this was attractive because it was on a main thoroughfare. It was a corner property. It was flat. It was mostly non-wet. It was in the sewer connection zone and utilities. And it's a possibility, but the owners politely asked us to leave and not consider the process anymore. Property number four is located at the east side of quadrant number two, lower central quadrant. The, the negative there is major utility easement conflict and poor site configuration. Property number five is at the far east side of number two in English Town, lower central quadrant. There's a major gas easement and high voltage power towers through the site, so it's not practical for consideration. Number six property is the east side of number two, lower central quadrant. The family wished that the land go to farmland preservation. The water and sewer infrastructure is missing, and there's potential pesticide contamination from previous farming that we believe. Number seven is in the number one northern quadrant. It's a large site, but limited buildable space due to encroaching wetlands. That's a common theme throughout this township. Property number eight is in the southern quadrant. The property owner is engaged, and the Board of Education and administration is now completing our due diligence and vetting that property. Number nine, 10, 11, and 12 are all at the east side of number two, lower central quadrant. There's limited potential, location far from growth area, and potential environmental restrictions pertaining to all four of those. Number 13 is at the far west side of the number two, lower central quadrant. It's got a very poor site configuration. Number 14 is the far west side of the number two, lower central quadrant. Great site, but extremely remote from areas of need. That is on the remote, far area of Cranberry South River Road, far away, where we take many minutes to get the bus in the tiering system. Then we looked at, per the board's request, some configurations of our schools and areas that we own around our schools. Mill Lake School, for instance, we looked at building at that particular location, but the site's not considered for addition. There's numerous wetlands that are prohibitive around the area of Mill Lake for the property that the district owns. Apple Garth School, on the other hand, we are currently doing a site development feasibility study and conceptual design for a new replacement building on Apple Garth's property. The vetting of that is still ongoing, and that's a very viable option for one of our needs for this multifaceted project. Oak Tree School, we considered building on that land. Further site analysis will be reviewed. But unless if the more attractive Apple Garth site encounters restrictions or problems, we will probably choose to pass on Oak Tree School. Just isn't, isn't large enough, and it would, it would create certain problems. And also the middle school, we looked at the land around the middle school. Further site analysis is currently on hold. The location is too congested for additional student population, and there's also pretty significant wetland population as you head toward the post office from the middle school. So those are 18 sites that the district looked at, and we have, from those 18, three that are very viable, as I said, in the southern quadrant. And we are going to go into executive session to discuss one of the properties tonight. And the reason for that is, it, it really needs to remain undisclosed at, at this time, where such a disclosure of the matter could adversely affect the public interest in the procurement of the property. But there will be more disclosure of that as, as the need for confidentiality no longer So that said, Madam Board President, back to the Business Administrator's Report. Madam Board President and members of the Board of Education, it is recommended that board action items A through J be approved by consent roll call. So moved.
A second. Any comments or questions? Okay, Ms., Mrs. Lang?
I, I have a question about letter J, and I know that I'm newer here to the board, but I have been attending the curriculum meetings, and I still have, I, I, as a member of the public, have a lot of questions about the usage of the performance matters. And I didn't feel that, as a member of public, that it was explained a whole lot. And I, I think that personally, I think it's 42,000, $43,286 is an awful lot of money for us to be committing to this data collection program, and I have great concerns of it. So I think that it needs to be, I, I just think it needs to be looked at through curriculum some more before it's on the agenda. I didn't think that it was fully, questions were answered.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Mayo?
I was going to make a motion to table J and send it back to the curriculum, because I still have concerns about it. We had a presentation last month, but it was more theoretical, and I didn't get a sense of, that we were using it that much. I also hasn't, haven't seen a copy of the contract. I'd like to see that. And so I'm making a motion to send it back to curriculum.
Mr. Chiarella?
I, is there a motion on the floor?
She made a motion.
She made motion to table it.
A second in order for a-
I'll second that motion.
A motion to table, table J and bring it-
Back to curriculum. No more discussion.
Right, so at this point, you would have a motion and a second to table. We would need to take roll call on that. Right?
Yes, ma'am. There is a motion to table, which is a priority motion. It ends deliberation. In conjunction with tabling, it's, it's to send it back to curriculum committee. Motion moved by Mrs. De Mayo, seconded by Mrs. Lang. So we will have a roll call. Vote to table item J. Mrs. Arminio?
No.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
I was gonna, I, I just want to say, I was gonna ask-
We can't.
So I'm not going to deliberate, but I'm going to say yes, just because I need more information.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. De Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lang?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
No.
Mr. Russo?
No, and I do, just have a question.
We're not allowed to debate.
Mr. Rutske?
I'd say yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
That's six affirmative votes to table and send back to curriculum. Five is required. So item J has been tabled and sent back to curriculum committee.
Okay.
So the motion on the floor now for the Business Administrator's Report.
Is A through I?
A through I with the exception of J.
Okay, is there any comment? Mr. Russo?
Can I ask a question about I, please?
Yes.
The motorola radio system? Is this an agreement we had last year as well?
Madam?
Mr. Gorsky?
Same price or different price?
Yes. It is, it is an agreement that we had last year. It's a wonderful joint services agreement with the municipality, where we share the cost of the infrastructure of these motorola radios. And it also allows our system to tie into the police department, which is a great safety feature. The price is materially the same, if not the same, as last year.
Okay, great.
And I believe this is, we've had this agreement for about 10 years now?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so it's not something new. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
Again, this is board action items A through J with the exception of J. Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. De Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lang?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
So I am staying with the exception of items A, D, G, and I vote yes.
Thank you, sir. And Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion passes. With the exception, of course, of J, which has been sent back to curriculum.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, that concludes my report.
Okay, so we will go to the board president's report. I just have two items. The first is, at the reorg meeting on January 4th, Mr. Chiarella asked me to look at forming some kind of a committee to look at working with other districts and members of our community to get the school funding formula fully funded. That's a hard thing to say, if you say it more than once. After speaking further to Mr. Chiarella and getting his thought process and talking with Dr. Kozak and Mr. Gorsky, it was decided that I am going to form an ad hoc committee on fair funding, and Mr. Chiarella is going to chair that committee. This committee is kind of a little bit of, little different than the ones we've had in the past, where we're not asking the committee to make a recommendation to the Board of Education, but we're asking that committee to work to get our voices heard and so that the legislators could understand the predicament that's going on in Monroe Township. And at this year, being an election year, and that funding, school funding for lots of schools is the number one priority, we think it's important to get our, our voices heard, because it's hurting us. So we need to think a little bit out of the box. So we are hoping to work with other districts like ours, and the stronger we are, the louder we are, the more we're going to be heard. And Dr. Kozak mentioned that there are other school districts that are looking to do a very similar thing. If we could all band together, that would be really good. So we will be reaching out to some of the people that we feel would be an asset to this committee, and we're hoping that this committee would give the Board of Education periodic updates. Ken, do you have anything that you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, I just, I would like to thank you, Madam President, for, for going through with this. But I'd also like to thank Dr. Kozak and Mr. Gorsky, you know, the administration for, for taking it seriously, looking into it. Mr. Gorsky came up with the idea of an ad hoc committee, which I thought was wonderful, because that didn't even enter my mind. And then Dr. Kozak immediately started looking around and doing some research. He reached out to several of his colleagues in other districts, set up some meetings, was able to find a lot of documentation on other groups that existed that I had no idea that even existed, that are already fighting this fight. So it makes it easier when we have people that are willing to fight with us, and that maybe we can join, and then they can join us, and we could grab those 200 districts or 20 districts, 30 districts, 50 districts, whatever, and put pressure on our legislators and on our future candidates for governor to get us some more funding.
And I'm sure you're going to want to get on top of this as soon as possible, right, Mr. Chiarella?
Yes, so thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. And the second thing is that Dr. Kozak and Mr. Gorsky and I had a, a nice conversation, a little meeting with the mayor and Wayne Hamilton from the township. And we were just invited over to talk with them, and it was a very casual conversation. They, they wanted to know where we were in the process of the land, and they understand how the need for us to continue to look at building much-needed schools in Monroe, and they offered their continued support to us. We also had a conversation, we talked about the great things that are happening in Monroe, not just in the school district, but in the township itself, and the need to communicate that to all of our residents. They offered us space in their quarterly newspaper that goes out four times a year to all the citizens, the residents of Monroe Township. And that's going to be helpful to us to get our information out there, too. And I believe, Dr. Kozak, you've already written your first article?
I have.
Yes. So we look forward to reading that in the paper. And I look forward to a, a very good collaborative relationship with the township and, between the township and the Board of Education. Thank you. And I think that concludes my report for today, because we've already talked a little bit when we came back about the board going through some training to update us on how we're going to use the agenda and the internet and try to go paperless as we move forward. So at this time, we'll go to other Board of Education- So at this time, we'll go to other Board of Education business. Is there, Mr. Russo?
Just want to ask one, one question.
Sure.
Yeah, regarding the funding, I know, we've been talking about it for a long time, but how many years has it been that we, this school district, has not been receiving fair funding?
Two thousand and eight?
Two thousand and eight?
Madam?
Yes.
Not receiving fair funding is, is difficult to describe. The last year that the formula was fully funded by the state of New Jersey was the last year of the Corzine administration, I believe that was two thousand and eight?
That's what I was thinking.
Two thousand and eight. So that not only underfunded Monroe, but all of the districts across the state of New Jersey. Monroe has some unique problems, depending on how you look at it, because school districts' aid for schools adequacy budget is a type of state aid called equalization aid. A state think tank put together a model to determine what an adequacy budget is, which is a hypothetical financial model for what it should cost to run an average school district, with an average price per teacher, an average price per nurse, an average benefit cost, et cetera. And that is called a district's adequacy budget. The state doesn't have enough resources to fund all of the New Jersey adequacy budgets, so they base it on a, a fair share allocation. And the fair share allocation looks at an X-rays each district for two factors, income and property wealth. And Monroe is determined to get no help and no equalization aid because of those two factors being favorable for Monroe. The argument is of the graduation of that certainly, because South Brunswick, for example, receives thirty million dollars a year in equalization aid, where Monroe gets zero. There doesn't seem to be a fair enough graduation of the distribution of equalization aid, in my opinion, from working with this for so many years, that a district like Monroe would be told to basically fend for yourself and, and support your own adequacy budget. In comparison, Monroe only gets less than three million dollars of state aid in categorical aids, where we qualify for certain categories like special education, transportation, security, et cetera. So thirty million to support the inadequacy budget next door in, in South Brunswick, where Monroe gets zero, and only three million for equalization aid. So there is a terrible underfunding and funding inequity that exists in Monroe, and we have been addressing this as vigorously as we can for at least the last eight years. And, and, you know, like, like Dr. Kozak said, this district had, I was very influential in, in writing our own legislation to uniquely qualify Monroe for, for additional aid, to fully fund the formula for Monroe because of the number of senior citizens that reside here and unfairly pay their burden of the tax share. That's a long-winded answer to your question, but it's been at least eight years of underfunding, and it accumulates over time, because the resources needed to make up for that state aid funding go into the local tax levy, and as we've presented before, the local tax levy supports eighty-eight percent of all revenues required to fund the school district operations, which is an incredibly burdensome amount.
We, we need to find out who is the person who is defining the word "fair." This is who we have to talk to.
I don't disagree, yes.
And I think that was just one of the reasons Mr. Chiarella suggested a, a committee, it's just another way to go about doing this. We've tried different ways. We'll try to go back to the letter-writing campaign and get the township behind us while we're doing the ad hoc committee, and I think we, we put everything together, and we reach out to other districts now, and we all work together, and we're gonna make some noise, I hope.
The committee is excellent. It's good to get everybody involved that you could, to collaborate with as many towns to put as much pressure, but keeping the, the public, at least in our district, informed and, you know, we had a couple of times there were meetings here where the energy level was very high. We know about the discussions that were taking place, and I think it's time to tap into that.
Yes, I agree. Thank you. So we're at, any other Board business? Any member of the Board of Education would like to speak? Mr. Chiarella?
Yeah, I just have two things. So number one, I wanted to just congratulate the marching band, and just tell them, tell all the students how proud I am of them, not only for putting New Jersey on the map, but for putting Monroe on the map. It's a very proud moment for us, and so I'm, you know, I'm just happy to be, that we're able to recognize them tonight, so thank you for that. Mrs. Carino, I wanna congratulate you also, I saw your daughter was given an award, so that's wonderful, that, you know, not only that you're a sitting Board member and get to see that, but that's just to choose that involved. And there were so many parents, band parents, that I know personally, and students I know personally, and then the, you know, the, the band directors, which are fabulous, so, so thank you, wherever they are. They're home, doing homework. Congratulations. The, the other, one other thing that I wanted to bring up, and now I'm gonna, now I'm gonna be Debbie Downer, is just on the, on ELA for seventh grade, and I only know this, my daughter is in, in seventh grade, and they have reading assignments for ELA, and they have book assignments where they have to, you know, they have to get a book, and read the book, and, and go through the, and go through the curriculum. Well, anyway, the problem that we're finding as parents is that, and when I say we, I mean my wife and myself. I'm, I have a lot of kids, but I'm not everyone's parent. Is that, we're, you know, we're, we're going to the library, the library doesn't have the book, because all the other kids are also checking out the same book, and then we've canvassed to go around to other bookstores in the area, and no one, you know, all, everyone's sold out. Then we need, and we needed the book, you know, in a timely manner, of course, because it's, it's for, it's for school. But then I was on, on Facebook, and it seemed like there were a lot of other parents. Now, I didn't take part in that conversation, but I was able to, in the middle school Facebook page, I was able to look at some of the conversations that were going on, and it was the same kinda theme, just about those books, and, and being able to find the books, and having to buy the books, and things like that, so I don't know if there's anything that we can do, I'm not asking us to defray the cost of those books, but if we could somehow order, have the, have the libraries have those available for the students, if we're gonna have those in, you know, have those as part of the curriculum, where they have to have those, because it puts a burden on them, I think, to be able to find those books and source them in time without going to amazon.com or something like that and buying them, which is what we had to end up doing. And that was it.
Dr. Albert, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, can I just ask a question?
Are these the books that, like, a whole class is reading, or are these the books that
the students are choosing to read on their own?
They're, they're, the class is reading them, and they bring them in and discuss the-
Okay, 'cause the books that the whole class is reading, we should have those available for our students. The reason I ask that question is because most of the ELA teachers at the middle school have gone to a reader's workshop model, so the students are choosing their own books. There's no way for us to have every single choice that, that a student would want available to them at the time that they want them. I know we do have a new media specialist this year, so I know at the middle school, she is working with the teachers to add to her library in the middle school, so I will bring that up with Dr. Rozell, as maybe we can survey students to see what other books that we can get for our school library. The class ones, we should have class sets for those, and I'll, and I'll look into that and find out why they weren't available. But like, that's why I asked the question, because if it's a reader's workshop model, it's different, 'cause not every student is reading the same book, so maybe there's four or five students that want the same book, because, you know, they talk, and then they recommend books to each other, which is what we want them to do. But, so those, we may not be able to have that available, but for a class set, we will absolutely have that available.
And then if, and even if we could work with the township library, you know, we have a great facility over there.
We do. We, we actually work very closely with the township library. The township librarian comes into all of our schools, does book talks with our students, especially when it starts coming time for summer reading, and we, all of our librarians work closely, and Dr. Rozell actually goes to every, every month, they have the library meeting, and she does go, so she's the liaison between us, so we, we're in constant contact with the public library.
Thank you.
Mr. DeMaio?
To that effect? Why, why don't we reach out to the parents? 'Cause I have two boys, and every year we get the summer reading, and we get the books, right? I've bought the books, and I have all these summer reading books that I would be happy to donate back to the school. So would it be possible to send out an email saying, you know, "book donation, make a list of the books," and then parents could go and donate them? Because I have a ton of books, and I don't have anyone, I don't know anyone with little, small children, so, I mean, you know, what, something, and then you could either give them out or use them in the library.
I could look into that.
Is there any?
Sounds similar to the passing down of junior prom and prom dress, to the next generation. You do that with books, it's all the better.
Any other Board of Educ-, Mrs. DeMaio?
I have two things. I would like to reiterate what Ken said about the marching band. I think it's just amazing that they were able to go to, you know, Hawaii and perform, and they really, they did a great job, and it was a beautiful video, ever how short it was. Secondly, last week, I spent two days at the State House. I went to the Joint Committee on Public Schools on Monday, and on Tuesday, I went to the Assembly Education Committee. And the talk at the two days was on school funding, and the School Funding Reform Act of two thousand and eight, and it was, the speakers were by invitation only, so I was just there to sit and listen, and, you know, there was some overlap on the days, but Speaker Vincent Prito came. He has tasked these two committees with looking at the school funding formula and figuring out how to make it better and how to make it work for New Jersey. And the consensus was that the organizations that were spoke were such as the Education Law Center, New Jersey NJEA, school boards, New Jersey Principals and Supervisors, the New York Teachers Union, the NAACP, VOTEC, the Garden State Coalition are, are some of them. And the consensus was that the schools have been underfunded, which we all know, and that they're being hurt by a lack of funding. And some of these, you know, groups spoke to specific areas where children were being hurt because of the lack of funding. This year's schools are being, some of the facts I got from these two days is that this year's schools are being underfunded by one billion, and over the last eight years, almost eight billion dollars. Pretty much everybody felt there, we don't need a new formula, but we need to look at the current formula, we need to run it, and there may be areas where it can be tweaked and made better, because it's not really, it's not accomplishing everything it needs to accomplish. And that was pretty much it. I know that, oh, the education, education, the Assembly Education Committee is having a listening tour, where they're having several meetings, I think one in the north, one in the south, and one in central Jersey, where you, anybody can go and speak about school funding. It's open to the public, you have to sign up ahead of time. The only one that's on the calendar right now is, where is it? I don't think, I think it's February 1st in Bergen County, from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. I know, I called Assemblywoman Creators, who's head of the Education Assembly Committee office today, and asked when the other two dates were, and the guy wasn't able to give me the central Jersey one, and the southern one is not on the, on the calendar yet. But they will be available, and I think it would be good if people were interested in going and speaking on behalf of Monroe.
Thank you for that information. And if you find out the other dates?
Yeah.
Can let us know. Thanks. Anyone else?
Madam President?
Oh, Mrs. Lang?
I know I'm repeating what Ken and Jill said about the, our marching band, they were fantastic, and they did a wonderful job. We're very fortunate, we have a very supportive band director and school staff, and our students were so wonderful, but I think it's remiss not to mention our Music Parents Association, and all the hard work and the time that they put into fundraising, the work that they do at the, the football games, just bringing equipment to the field, back and forth from the field, the work they do in chaperoning and everything, and I think we're very fortunate to have a very dedicated Music Parents Association, along with all the great PTAs and PTOs we have, but this Music Parents Association has done a phenomenal job, and they should be applauded also for the great work that they do to get our kids to Hawaii and, and to represent us, and to represent our veterans, which I think is a wonderful thing.
Thank you very much for that. Anyone else? Okay, then, at this time, we will go to the public forum, the second public forum, and again, anyone wishing to speak to anything, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and we will adhere to our three-minute time.
Good evening. Andy Pelori, sixteen St. James Street. When I just walked into the board meeting today, I thought everybody read my post on the Facebook, and they were all excited about listening to the school board, but as it turned out, they came for the kids. All jokes aside, I think, yes, it's a really commendable job to represent us in, in Hawaii, and if I would've known, I would've joined the marching band myself. I heard a lot of discussion about the funding today, and I'm very excited to hear that. Mr. Russo, I can assure you that the enthusiasm hasn't gone down. One of the main reasons I ran for the Board of Education is to see how we can get more funding here, and I'll definitely be interested in doing it. I did not know that there's coordination and discussions are ongoing. However, I started my own discussion, as a member of the community and as a parent, and as a tax-paying member of the, of the community as well, with Dan Benson, as well as with the, as some of the, the Senate President Sweeney as well. What we intend to do is, at the grassroots level, to get those signatures together throughout the township and, and run a campaign, because it's an election year, so funny things happen during the election year. So we wanna make sure that we take advantage of that. And also, I'm in touch with Phil Murphy, who's one of the candidates running on one of the sides, and the intent is to bring him into Monroe and have a town hall kind of a debate, where hopefully we'll have all of our citizens show up and ask him a pointed question about what he's gonna do for Monroe. I, at this point, I really don't care what he does for the state, I really wanna know what he's doing for Monroe. So one of the things that I request the Board, if it's okay with you to provide that to me, is some sort of a background on what are the other municipalities that are suffering in a very similar role than, as we are. The time is of essence, so as you all know, by the time June comes around, there are three or four iterations, where the Budget Committee sends it to the legislation, goes back to the Budget Committee, then goes to the Governor. I think there's a timeframe, I don't recall the exact date, but it's in February, that we need to get on the agenda, there gotta be a line item in there. So we need to do this within the next month or so. It's okay to do parallel efforts, because there's nothing wrong in hitting it from multiple sides. So if Mr. Gorski or any, anyone who can provide me with some information in terms of finances and what other townships are going through a similar issue, I'll be more than happy to spearhead that from our side.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Prakash Parab, thirty-three Denner Drive. Chairman, I have, Chairwoman, I have four questions.
Okay.
I'll go, these are, first three questions are on one topic, and fourth question is on different topic. So I would like to go to the first topic. What is the first question? I've sent all these questions to Dr. Kozak yesterday. What is the total budget for current year? How much budget fund is allotted to special needs students? That's the first question. Second question, please provide number of special needs students we have in Monroe Township. The third question, how much, this is very important. I am in support of special needs students, don't misunderstand me. How much federal and state funding we receive to support special needs students for current year?
That your questions?
Yeah.
Okay, Dr. Kozak, would you like to respond?
Yes. The first question is, what is the total budget for the current year, and how much of the budget fund is allotted to special needs students? And Mr. Gorski helped me with securing some of the financial information, but as per the two thousand and sixteen-seventeen user-friendly budget, which is posted on the district website, the general fund budget is one hundred and eight million, two hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine. Approximately thirty percent of the general fund, of general fund budget is dedicated to classified special needs students who make up eighteen percent of the population. The second question is the number of special needs students we have in Monroe Township. We currently have one thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight classified students. And I just wanna clarify a little bit for people who may or may not know, students can become- Students can become, can be classified for a number of different things, from going, it could be speech impairment, to visual needs, learning, you know, different learning impairments. So there are different levels of that. And how much federal and state funding we receive to support the special needs students for the current year? And again, as per the 2016-17 user-friendly budget, we receive $1,976,819 in categorical special education state aid, $214,453 in extraordinary aid for out-of-district student tuition cost reimbursement, and $995,527 in IDEA, which is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act.
So, the clear math says that we are not getting enough state and federal funding.
True.
This is a double dipping for paying taxes for Monroe citizens. And senior citizens, I heard they are also paying, so it is not good. So I really support everyone here, it is a hot topic. We have to talk to the legislation, assemblymen, senators, and go to the meetings, debate about it. We fully support you all, and we all want to support from the, please make sure that our committees you are forming include public, also, public leaders who are not in the board meetings, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate your comments.
So, I'll wait for, I'll wait.
Yes.
I was just going to thank the gentleman for submitting his question in writing. It allows the administration to give a more thorough and effective response.
We will do that, I will do that, and it is not with bad intent, I assure you. Now, I'm changing the topic, Chairman, Chairwoman. Nordburnsick is building new school. I read in paper. It will cost $60 million. This will increase the tax on 300,000 house. For example, the house is $300,000. It is going to tax $38 per month, so about $450 per year. What is the tax burden we are anticipating in Monroe tax when we have new schools in Monroe? If you don't have answer, I can, you know, wait for the next session, but if you have a rough answer, you can give that. Followed by that, I have a comment.
Yeah, do you want to answer that one?
Thank you. Dr. Kozak and I, in preparation for one of the Student Growth Advisory Committee meetings, keep in mind, Student Growth Advisory Committee met for the last seven months to study the demographic changes in Monroe and the limitations of facilities, and some recommendations to the board. We did some very, very preliminary work with the financial advisor to try to narrow down, just within the $50 million ranges of a referendum, how much it would cost. There's a lot of variables in that. Certainly, interest rates are a big variable. The ratable growth in Monroe is a favorable variable that would reduce the tax rate, and the taxes on every individual person. The interest component is a very big part. Most undefined right now is the size and scope of the project. And without that, we really can't get a handle on how much the tax component is. But it's a fabulous question, one which we are going to disclose in much more detail once this comes more into focus.
I would like to comment, as I said, it's very short. Our taxes have tripled. I have been here for 14 years. I started with $5,500, and today it is $16,000. We now need to stop, you know, taxes went up because we were a growing community. Now it is, it is, same thing I'm going to talk in the council. Now it is a time to stop building houses for senior citizens, also for the young citizens. We better be prepared, what we have, we improve the quality of Monroe citizens with good education, good recreation with what we have. So that is, and in case builders want to build, as we spoke today, impact fees for development. In Pennsylvania, if the builders are building, they have to contribute for the schools. In New Jersey, the legislations have avoided that. Legislations are doing something without asking us. So, we have to ask, when you all are drafting a letter, please make sure this is drafted.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
Hi, good evening. Sai Kumar Agaram, 24 Trucker Street. I'd just like to say, like, I'm a new resident to Monroe. And first of all, I would like to commend all the members here. I know, like, it's kind of a thankless job, but you know, I really appreciate all the efforts you are putting in.
Thank you.
So I just had a very quick question, and, you know, maybe this was answered in the earlier sessions. Pardon me. So the schools, the land, the land, I'm sorry. Yeah, I know, I think I'm fine, yeah. The land acquisitions you were talking about, so do you have an idea of, like, what are the different schools, I mean, how many schools, and what are the different schools you're actually planning? Do you have a number on that?
Sure.
Currently, in order to meet the number of unhoused students, which are defined as students beyond the capacities of the schools, and with the work that we studied from our demographer, who updated our enrollment projections for the, up to the next 20 years, but we're mainly focusing on the next five to 10. It appears that the most probable solution that we're going to recommend to the board is a new Monroe Township middle school, a new Monroe Township elementary school, and certainly in addition to the Monroe Township high school, which opened at capacity because of the defeated referendum and the cuts that were made to it before it passed.
Thank you, appreciate it, and thanks for the water. Bye.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
Hello, good evening. Ramranat, 6 Ovin Strive, Monroe. The, just had a question on the, when you said, Mr. Gorski, looking at the Apple Garden site, I think which is under study, as well as Oak Tree. I think we have brought this up before, some of the community members. Are you looking at, from the Apple Garden, both in terms of replacing the existing school, but also as an alternative plan, building adjacent to it? You know, where the baseball field is, it's unused. Are we looking at both of those? Obviously, replacing something is going to be a lot more challenging, right? Versus adding to it. And I guess a related question to that is also similarly on the Oak Tree. I think you mentioned that if the Apple Garden plan is feasible, we won't have to look into Oak Tree. So again, I'm thinking, is that also a feasible thing, where you try to also add on to Oak Tree, similar to adding on to Apple Garden? Again, when you look at the tax situation and things that the gentleman earlier raised, how do we kind of minimize the tax burden? How do we minimize the risk, right, of execution of these projects? And we know that the timing, time is of essence. So how do we look at certain paths where the risk is more controllable and limited for us? Thank you.
Mr. Gorski?
Yes, thank you, madam. To the gentleman's question, through the efforts of our fantastic facilities director, in conjunction with Dr. Alvik and Dr. Kozak, looking how the facility can meet the students' needs, there's some interesting options that only the board has the authority to decide upon through the administrative recommendation. Some of the options are to build a, another elementary school wing in back of the existing Apple Garden structure. So to limit the student disruption during construction, you could still have them housed in the old facility, move them into the new, and then either tear down the old, salvage part of the old, or even replace the old with a new structure, another new wing. Very creative thoughts that we've studied so far. Sometimes renovation is very expensive. The Apple Garden school facility, to just put it in a nutshell, has far lived beyond its useful life in every, every consideration. And any add-on to the additional building would be money unwisely spent, because a lot of the systems would have to be brought up to current code standards. And, and when you start opening walls in a facility that goes back to being purchased and financed with New Deal money, you don't know what you're going to find. Oak Tree, some of the limitations there, as Dr. Alvik has represented, is the number of students who can be effectively housed in an elementary school level. If an addition was to be put on Oak Tree, you could be pressing 900 to 1,000 students in an elementary school. And this is all very preliminary and speculative discussion, but that number of students, according to the educators at this table, is not perhaps the best model to consider. It could be used as an addition to absorb some of the growth if some of the other pieces of the plan came into existence, such as the middle school, and you had to put additions on to some other schools to share the burden. But we have 1,500 unhoused students right now. We're projected to have up to 2,500 unhoused students in the next five years. 2,500 unhoused students, no matter where you add on or construct, is going to require the capacity of no less than probably two and a half schools. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
With follow-up, Prakash Parab again. To follow up with a new hire permanent teacher, new hire permanent teacher, or experienced for the permanent position, do you have any grace period where the teacher is evaluated before you make them permanent?
Dr. Kozak?
Yes, any new teacher that comes into the district, we basically have four years to determine it, and it's based on, you know, every year. They're evaluated four times a year. There's different resources that are made available to them. There are people that go in and evaluate it, or are checking their progress, checking the students' progress. Yeah, there's, yes, there are many steps that we, that we take to ensure that they're meeting our standards.
My, the question is, if the, within a year, if they are not up to your expectation, they should be let go, because four years grace period is a long impact to the student.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it doesn't have to go four years. It can go, it can be less than a year, really, if the need be, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Is there any more questions from the public? Okay, seeing no one, we will go to our closed session resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects. One, potential land acquisition. Two, a personnel matter. Three, negotiations. Following closed session, action may be taken. Oh, okay. The discussion conducting closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists, and we should be in closed session about a half an hour. I need a motion and a second. Ms. Arminio, second, Mr. Chiarella, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then at this time, we will move into closed session.
He likes to give me projects.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, at this time, the board will go back into public session, and I believe Dr. Kozak has a motion, or a resolution?
I do.
Resolution.
Thank you, Madam President, and...
Seeing nobody in the public, I think you just...
Well, I didn't get to the public forum.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
So it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the termination of the employment of employee number 3769, retroactive to January 12, 2017. Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator/Board Secretary are hereby authorized and directed to take all necessary steps to implement this action of the Board of Education.
Mr. Chiarella? Mr. Retsky? Any comments or questions for Dr. Kozak? Then we'll have a roll call.
Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman, absent. Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lang?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino, absent. Mr. Rybeck is absent. Mr. Russo?
Yes, I'm here.
How do you vote on the termination?
I recuse myself.
Recused? Okay, thank you, sir. And Mrs. Kolpanovic?
Yes.
That is five affirmative votes, motion passes.
Okay, at this time, we will go to the public forum, and seeing no one...
There you go.
Then we will go to our next scheduled Board of Education meeting, which will be Wednesday, February 15, 2017, at 7:00 o'clock at the Monroe Township High School. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Retsky, Ms. Arminio, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then the meeting is adjourned.